All right. Well, good evening, everybody. At this point in time, I don't have a gavel, so I will bang on the counter and we call this meeting to order. It is my pleasure to introduce for the invocation, Councilwoman Nager introducing a very dear friend of mine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, I am Ms. Pastor Tobias Slingensiepen, who's going to be providing our invocation. He grew up here in Topeka, attended 501 schools, and graduated from Topeka West, which is a pretty good school, if I do say this myself. And went to the University of Kansas. And after he completed his seminary work in Germany, returned to Topeka and has been here ever since. I grew up with his kids, and it's always very good to have his presence in our community. So Pastor?
Thank you. So if you take a moment, I'll invite you to join me in prayer, please. Oh God, in this time in which we all face significant adaptive challenges, I pray for these, our elected officials. To deal with the coronavirus outbreak in a way that saves lives as well as livelihoods is a daunting challenge indeed. It is hard to see clearly in the dark of uncertainty, but they and we must walk ahead nonetheless in faith. Grant them courage to do what they can with the knowledge and resources available to them. For the rest of us, I pray that this pandemic not threaten our sense of community, that it not imperil our ability to be good neighbors and to offer each other whatever support is needed to navigate this challenge humanely. On the contrary, oh God, I pray that it help us all to discover within ourselves and with each other new and creative ways of being this city, this community, ways that will allow us to look back on this time with gratitude and with pride. I pray for medical professionals and support staff, for all those who are doing all they know how to do to save lives and foster healing. And where they are nevertheless forced to confront their professional and personal limits, send them messengers of your mercy to comfort, strengthen, and encourage them. I pray for those bearing the illness and loss of loved ones, for those whose pain has been compounded by restrictions on their ability to be with their ill or dying family members and friends, and for whom traditional ways of expressing grief and offering comfort have not been available. As you, oh God, abandon no one to loneliness but are a light in every darkness, grant the grieving light and comforting guidance too. May you comfort the family and the friends of Joheem Meredith. In memory and in honor of his life and the lives of too many others, prod us to preserve, prod us to persevere in identifying and confronting the forces that continue to mar and undermine the lives of our fellow Topequians. But no less, our city's efforts to create the just, united, peaceful, and prosperous future you would lead us toward. May we who draw breath, oh God, be aware and grateful for your gift of life. May our lives serve to enhance the conditions of life for all. Amen.
I will take a point of privilege before we go into the roll call and say that Tobias has been a blessing to our community in many ways. A lot of people may not know this yet, but his wife Abby Slingensiepen has been an avid mask maker for our community. She has made over 500 masks. And when I wear my polka dotted mask, I always give her credit. But not only does she do that, but when 501 was going to start doing the delivery of lunches, the churches were going to do that, we needed 100 masks prepared for all the volunteers. She provided all of those masks. So I want to publicly thank you and Abby for your love to this community and for everything that you guys do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We proceed with the roll call.
Mayor DeLa Isla?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akla?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Nager?
Here.
Dobler?
Here.
Duncan?
Here.
And Lesser?
Here.
We have 10 present.
At this point in time, we move on to the consent agenda. If the clerk could read.
Item A are minutes of the regular meeting of May 12, 2020. And there is a list of cereal malt beverage applications sent via electronic mail this afternoon, and staff is requesting approval.
Move approval.
We have a motion for approval by Councilman Dobler. We have a second by Deputy Mayor. This point in time, are there questions or comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we proceed by voting through all call.
Mayor DeLa Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yes.
Then having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to the action items. If the clerk could read, item A.
A is setting a public hearing date of June 9, 2020 for consideration of imposing special assessments for Aquarian Acres Subdivision Number 9 for Street Improvement Project T 601011, Phase 1.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, the city has completed street improvements for Aquarian Acres Subdivision. The next step is to impose special assessments on the benefited properties. State law requires that prior to levying assessments, the governing body set a public hearing and published notice. Staff is recommending a public hearing of June 9.
What is the pleasure of the body?
Mayor, I move approval.
We have a motion for approval by the Deputy Mayor, who would like to second this.
I second.
We have a second by Councilwoman Nager. Additional discussion or questions for the staff? Councilwoman Nager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is, as we're moving back into a more public space with our public meetings, what precautions are we taking in order to ensure the safety of staff and the public?
With regards to the public hearing, to have it on the 9?
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time?
Were you referring to how we would have a public hearing on the 9?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Basically, what we would do more than likely is since we'll have a restriction of some sort, we would look to have people that are interested in speaking at the public hearing sign up, which is typically what we've done with most agenda items. And then based on the number allowed into the room, we'll work through that process and allow those that would want to come and talk at the public hearing. A lot of times, these particular projects don't end up with that many that are interested in speaking at the public hearing. So I wouldn't expect a large number of individuals to show. But in case there were, we would simply take the names down and then we would rotate people through.
Additional comments or questions? Councilman Dobler?
City Manager, this is 100% benefit district.
Correct. Yes, correct.
Anything else? Team? Team, none? I think that we're ready for a vote. If the clerk would read the... We're going to vote my roll call.
Mayor DeLa Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yes.
Then having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item B in the agenda. If the clerk would read.
B is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, authorizing and adopting the 2021 to 2030 Capital Improvement Plan and the 2021 to 2023 Capital Improvement Budget and approving the project budgets attached.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we are again talking about our capital improvement budget. We are hoping that we can have the various amendments that may be interested in occurring for tonight be proposed and considered by the governing body. Before doing the individual council members' consideration of amendments they may wish to make, I want to propose one amendment relative to some staff changes that occurred based on the discussions last week. And so there would be an amendment asking the governing body to amend the resolution. Do them separate? Yeah, I can do them by separate. We have two ways that we could do this. We could do them as a group or do them separate. So I think for clarification, I'll read them each separate. And then if there were not objections, then you would be able to consider them as one amendment versus multiple amendments. So I would propose that I ask the governing body to...
City Manager? Pardon the interruption. You're coming in and out for me, and I think that from what I'm seeing from the other council members, the same thing is happening for them. What I understood was that you were proposing the alternative of either going for the approval after we go through all of the amendments or going one by one and approving one by one. Is that what you're suggesting? Because I would recommend us approving one by one.
Right. And that's the way I'm going to present... These are amendments from myself and staff. So the first amendment would be asking the governing body to amend the resolution by reducing the cost with Northwest Tyler from Lyman to Beverly Project Number 701019, scheduled for 2022 in the amount of $190,000. Also, reducing the cost associated with the Northwest Tyler Beverly to Paramore Project, Number 701034, scheduled for 2025 in the amount of $160,000. So that would be one amendment.
Comments from the governing body members?
Motion to amend.
So we have a motion for amendment? Do we have a second to continue with this amendment? We have a second. Now we're open for discussion on this amendment on the Beverly to Paramore Project. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. I'm kind of reserved about this. I know we're trying to save money. I really get that. But you know, there's just been some areas of town that have been neglected, and North Topeka has been one. So when we say that... I would like to know, there's been a plan, and when we say that they're going to amend that budget amount, what are we cutting out of that plan?
City Manager?
Thank you. In simplistic terms, we're taking out the middle lane of the project so that instead of being a three-lane road, it would end up being a two-lane road. That's the... Go ahead. Sorry.
And that's saving us how much?
$190,000 in 2022 and $160,000 in 2025.
Okay, by taking out the middle lane, so we're saying that street doesn't need a middle lane, but then there's other areas of town that they have a middle lane. I'm just a little bit skeptical about doing this. I want to make sure that all of the city gets the same... I mean, so we'll just never have it in there, right? We're just taking it out and we're just going to go with the two-lane, right?
That is the plan, yes. That is the revised plan.
I don't know if I support that. Again, you know, when you look at North Topeka and their streets, I want to do something. But in those plans, we put that for a reason. And just like we put in the plans for all the other areas of our town. So I really don't know if I can support taking that middle lane out. I understand we got to save money, but I'm just not there with this yet because we've got so much to do over there. So to say, you know, I've been on this council long enough to see us do that, and I know we need new streets, and I know we need new curbs, and I know we need gutters, but I just think we just got to figure it out.
Well, I know that a lot of work has been done with Councilwoman Valdivia Akla and other members of that neighborhood related to this project, discussing it with them. And so I would let them comment related to the work that they've done as far as considering this modification. This was not something that was done in a vacuum. There's been discussions with the neighborhood.
And I understand that, Brent. I totally understand that, and I appreciate that. I still don't know that I feel comfortable even with all of that approval. I just don't want to Band-Aid something. That's what I'm saying. So that's my comments. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Valdivia Akla?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to provide some feedback, several weeks ago before, you know, started looking in and bringing up about cuts and all of that, there had been discussions with the NIA in the area, which is why we have been receiving the onslaught of notices by email. When the constituents that actually live in that district that have been keeping their eye on this project since 2016, what they were writing in reference to is that they did not want to see budget cuts of, you know, $700,000 or $500,000, which would really hamper that project. There had been, and there is going to be another meeting down the road, but the neighborhood is fine. And I sent out multiple emails as well and made multiple phone calls. The neighborhood is fine with going from three lanes to two lanes because what that will still give them is curb, complete curb and gutter and sidewalks on both sides of five feet. So with that third lane, the traffic studies that they were doing did not warrant that third lane and may have actually imposed restrictions on the additions of what they were looking at with curbs and gutters and the sides and the width of the sidewalks. So this is actually giving them the necessities that they need of having that large sidewalks on both sides and, you know, drainage. And what will happen, because we know that Tyler, North Tyler, is a heavy traffic area, not just by constituents in the neighborhood, but also from Goodyear and from downtown Topeka, southwest Topeka, going into that part of Topeka, is that even though there's not going to be that third lane, with the two lanes there, they believe that it will create... It will create that stoppage that's needed to keep that traffic from going so fast down there as it does at times. So when there was the information of going to two lanes given to residents, that's what the city was proposing, they were fine with it. I mean, they don't have any issue with it. The letters and emails that we are seeing are... They don't want the additional cuts that were talked about last week of, I think, $700,000 and $500,000, if I'm correct. That's what they are opposed to. So this project would save, happened to save $350,000, I think is what the city manager is saying, from a reduction in that third lane. That reduction did not come about because of the CIP and trying to do cost savings. It came about as practicalities with the study that was done, with planning, and with the neighborhoods, with the neighborhood being okay with it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for the clarification. Additional comments or questions on this item? Yes, Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. Assuming Public Works has looked at the crash history and the third lane is not needed for left turn?
Your mic on.
Let me repeat that with the mic on. Assuming that Public Works has looked at the crash history and that the third lane for left turns is not necessary.
I'd have to ask Director Peak to answer that question. Jason, can you answer that question?
Sure, City Manager. Good evening, governing body, Mayor. Yes, Councilman Dobler, we did look at the crash history and a third lane is not... Would not address any of the crashes out there and was not needed as a safety measure based on the traffic study that we did.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Yes, I would like to know when the last traffic study was done and the original plan. How did we come up with the three lane if we only needed a two-lane?
Jason, can you respond to all of that?
Councilmember Ortiz, the original project request was for a three-lane roadway. I... It is identified as a collector from a volume standpoint. And so those are the types of roadways that we look at a three-lane. So the budget that was put in this project was based on it being a collector, meaning it's carrying higher volume of traffic than a local street. And driveways and turning movements, we looked at that three-lane roadway. I think just to add some additional comments, the conversation about removing the three-lane also minimizes the impact on the adjoining properties. You know, if we look at that corridor and the trees in the front yard that's there, we would have to widen that, add sidewalks. You know, we're getting into the front yards of the constituents. And you know, as I said before, the traffic study that was done for this design process did not warrant three lanes.
And when was the last traffic study done?
With this design, it would have been last year, 2019.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted... Since I'm the person who floated those bigger numbers, I thought I would mention it. I've been watching and advocating for the neighborhood, particularly for the sidewalks, because I knew what a priority they were. And so I knew when I put those numbers out. I knew enough about the project and the back and forth that the neighborhood was having to know that there was flux in it, but I did not know what the numbers were. So I really appreciate and congratulate Councilwoman Valdivia Akla for all the time that she has spent with them and really bringing people together on it. That's it, thank you.
No worries. Additional comments or questions from the body? Seeing none, we have this amendment in front of us. We've had a discussion. Thank you, Councilwoman Valdivia, for your work and everybody for their great questions. At this point in time, we will vote on this amendment. We have a motion and a second, right? Yes, we do. Okay, sorry. Just getting back in the... So Brenda, City Clerk, if you could call the vote?
Mayor DeLa Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Heck no!
Emerson? Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have nine yes, Ms. Ortiz voting no.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. At this point in time, City Manager, our next amendment?
Thank you. The second amendment proposed by staff would be to amend the resolution by removing the Topeka Police Department Fire Arm Range Overhead Roof and Baffle System, Project Number 131064.00, to be done in 2024 in the amount of $980,791.
Comments or questions from the governing body?
Move approval.
We have a motion by the Deputy Mayor. Do we have a second for the sake of discussion? We have a second by Councilwoman Padilla. Councilwoman Ortiz, you raise your hand.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are we removing it all together?
Yes, Councilwoman Ortiz, we are removing it all together.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, if the clerk could call the vote?
Mayor DeLa Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
You know, I'm a little baffled by this whole issue.
Duncan?
Yes.
Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yes.
Having voted yes, the amendment passes. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The third amendment that I will propose is delaying the Topeka Fire Department hazmat truck purchase, Project Number 861028.00, for one year. So moving it from year 2023 for consideration to year 2024.
Comments or discussions on this item?
I'll move approval.
We have a motion by Councilman Dobler. We have a second by Councilwoman Nager. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. I won't support this. I think that we've been really, really lucky in some of the incidents that we've had, the hazmat incidents. And I think that it's very crucial to our city. If you remember, we had two on 70. One was a gas bill that we were able to... Barely able to obtain, and then several others. I think this is very crucial. And again, we just move things further and further, further down the line, and they just get more expensive. I always said if I came back, I would get something with fire or police because all of their equipment is very, very expensive. And that's just the way it is. So I won't support it. And to wait an hour for somebody else or to have somebody else bring in their stuff to help us, I don't think we have that particular time. So I'm just hoping that we won't support this. And I surely hope that we don't have anything... Any hazmat activity that we will need it because it could turn out to be a crucial situation. And I think we've really been lucky. But one of these days, our luck's going to run out. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I will chime in that I know that we need to reduce the expenses, but after living what we're living through right now, I don't live in the days of if it'll happen. I live in the days of when something will happen that we will need it. So I just... I know that we're looking for cuts, but this one is not one that I'm going to be able to support. So if there's no additional comments?[1709.74] So if there's no additional comments, yes, Councilman Duncan?
Again, I'm not sure where you see me from, so I may wave my hands a lot this evening. I will support this, and I do it with a little bit of a caveat. And I spoke with the City Manager this week and the chief, and I guess a pledge, we'll have some further discussions if they'll allow me to and if this body will move it forward. I believe at some point, if we engage some of our congressional delegation and our governor's office in the state, that there are some dollars that may be available to assist us with this. And there's a variety of factors. We're a capital city, they have interest in both Homeland Security and some other agencies want a hazmat unit in this city. They also know that it serves a region. They might tell us no, but I have put out there that I'm willing to carry some water on this and work with those folks to see if we can get some assistance in the next several years to get something, some help paying for this thing.
Councilwoman Padilla, and then Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want for clarification. Now, does this remove from consideration the tow vehicle that had been talked about that would tow the current hazmat apparatus? Or is this still give us the opportunity to at least acquire a new truck that would tow the apparatus that we have currently?
This is to move the item as we have proposed it, which would be the replacement of both, in other words, as a contained unit. But we will look at exploring that as we also look at the possibility of what we can come up with for alternatives for other funding sources. But we'll take a look also at the towed unit, in other words, the prime mover for this particular system, and see whether or not we maybe could look at that as a replacement at least.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I support pushing it down a year. I support looking at the trailer possibility. Obviously, we need to have access to something like that somewhere. I really like Councilman Duncan's idea, and I would elaborate on it just a little further. And that is that in this case, you know, often we as the city are paying everything, like for Polk-Quincy viaduct or whatever it is, millions of dollars or thousands, whatever the issue is, in this case. And we've been sharing emergency management lately, too, and the county's been in the lead on that, and they've done a wonderful job. In this case, if we invited the county even, and the state, and the federal government, be it through Homeland Security or whatever, to purchase it, and we correspondingly offered to house it, to maintain it, and deploy it when needed, then we could have a real partnership on that that meant that of all those units of government, we would only have one instead of four. And we're well located to be the custodians. So that would give us a little time, maybe it won't take much time with you out on the street, but asking people. I think that's a really great concept. And then we could have the Cadillac model, if you will, but share that cause. So, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no additional comments at this point in time, we proceed with the roll call for the vote.
Mayor De La Isla?
No.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
No.
Ortiz?
No.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
No.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
No.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
No.
Okay, we have six no. Councilmembers Hiller, Emerson, Nager, and Duncan voting yes.
Having voted no, the motion fails. Next amendment.
Mayor, that is my last amendment to be proposed by staff.
Okay, at this point in time, we'll start going district by district. So, and what we'll do is, instead of one district going through a list of them, we'll provide an opportunity for each district to do one amendment at a time, if that is amicable for the group. Seems that it's so. So, Councilwoman Hiller, we start with your first amendment.
Well, Mayor, I may get in trouble with you right away. I have one amendment, but I wanted to make some comments before I offered that amendment. So you'll have to pass judgment on it. My conversation and amendment are strictly on the geo-bonded section of the CIP. That was the majority of the comments that I had last time and the responses that we got from staff. I wanted to comment that I really appreciated the staff-proposed changes, so I'm not going to talk about those, but I do think that as we just voted, they'll result in some savings. On the facilities, still with the math that's there and the handout that we got with facilities' needs, that totals 1.65 million per year for the whole five years. So I would still suggest to the body that adjusted for utilities and enterprise funds and expecting a few economies, that could still be basically 100% funded for 1.4 million a year across the five years. On the neighborhood infrastructure, the proposal to change that, commonly known as the SORT program, has really opened up a lot of healthy discussion, many agreeing, both from the neighborhoods and the council and otherwise, and staff, that change should be explored. I would suggest that if the carryover staff and the NIAs and the council reps from those areas engage in some discussions over the next six months, that there could be a really good recommendation in time for our 2022 CIP discussions. Most people that I talked to or heard from agreed that the 2021 allocation in that chart remain where it is since it has been awarded to the East Topeka North NIA, but that after that, the remaining years could be, could stay the same just until the conversations have occurred, or they could be adjusted now as we pass this. On the fire fleet and replacements, I think we could look at it again, but shifting could still be available. If I understand correctly, for instance, the fire department's rotation plan told us that they wanted to, that the optimal life for a vehicle was 10 years, but at the end of the 10 years, they would move a vehicle that had been fairly heavily used to a station that had lighter use and extend its life somewhat. And if that was really the case, then why Station Number 11, this is just an example, why Station 11 would need to replace a vehicle that just turned 10 years old when it would likely be the destination for a 10-year-old vehicle? I'm not saying we wouldn't replace it, but it could give some slippage in the timing. On Polk-Quincy viaduct, which is, has its own line item right now, I would suggest that we leave it that way so that it's got optional sources of funding tied to it, but that we reduce the geo-bond section just as much as possible to allow the dollars that we need for Polk-Quincy to come in under our council adopted cap. So with that, it's from the discussion on Polk-Quincy, it sounds like we might only need cash of 10 million out of the 20 million that we have been advised we need as our match. So perhaps pushing that budget for Polk-Quincy to 5 million a year for the final four years of our five-year budget would give us placeholders in there and give us some time to really work on seeing how we could come up with alternate sources, in-kind negotiations on that. Quick timeout to just congratulate everyone who worked on getting that through and thank the governor and the KDOT staff. I go through all of that because what I would like to move, I think there's some options still within that budget. Too many things to talk about tonight, I think, especially as fresh as the replies were to us today. So the motion I would like to make is to direct the City Manager with consideration of all the input from the governing body prior and any further we would have this evening, to bring us back a general fund geo-bond budget for 2021 to 2025, the totals no more than the governing body policy cap as amended by prior vote, allowing a higher amount for 2021. And Brenda, I've got that in writing if you need it. We talked last week, well, a couple weeks ago, however, two weeks ago, I guess, to direct the City Manager that we wanted him to bring us an operating budget that stayed within the current tax level, and rather than us going line item by line, I felt like asking him to bring it in under our policy cap would be the thing to do. So I so move.
Let's second that. Hey, we have a motion by Councilwoman Hiller.
A second. Councilwoman Valdivia, are you...
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor, I seconded that.
Comments or discussion on the proposed amendment by Councilwoman Hiller?
Let me clarify that. Can you have her repeat that, please?
It was muffled, so yes, thank you.
Oh, I'm so sorry. The motion is to direct the City Manager to, with consideration of the input from the governing body, to bring us back a general fund, general obligation budget for 2021 to 2025, so the full five-year CIP that we're looking at, that totals no more than the governing body policy cap as amended by prior vote that allows a higher amount for 2021. And if I need to clarify how that works, we're, we've been looking at a five-year budget. Our adopted policy cap is 27, for geo-bonding, is 27 million for every three-year grouping. The body, a couple of years ago, authorized to exceed that limit for a period of three years, the last of which is 2021. And it looks like from the way they budgeted that we had some carryovers so that actually there's an extra $4 million available as of 2021. Then we should be reverting to 9 million a year average, or, and so, and that budget is over. Not too much in 2022 and 2023, but a little more than an average of 3 million a year over in '24 and in '25. So with the various thoughts and whatever staff would discuss as well, to task the City Manager with going back and getting it at or under our adopted cap, our official cap is what I'm suggesting.
City Manager, if I may ask some clarification for you with regards to the expenditures, I know that part of that, like Councilwoman Hiller alluded in the beginning of our conversation, is part of the $20 million that we are allocating towards Polk-Quincy. My concern with this is that we don't yet have the guidance with regards to what things will be credited, and I know that we're going to start working on that, especially now that our Polk-Quincy viaduct has been announced as one of the projects that the state is going to help us work in. By us doing this, are we hindering our ability to grasp that total amount of money we need it?
Mayor, the reason that we have the Polk-Quincy project set aside is we know that in order to continue to do the other projects that we want to do under the normal general fund bonding, general obligation bonding that we do, we pulled that project separately and set it aside not to count against the cap. If we were to include it in the cap, it would, it would very much hinder, and a lot of projects would have to be removed from the normal process that we would do. And given that it's a, nearly a once-in-a-lifetime project, that it deserved to be set aside for its own funding, given that we've been waiting for as long as we have, and so that's why I supported it being set aside as a separate project.
Okay, so just for clarification, if we approve this amendment, that will not happen?
No.
Excuse me, Councilwoman, City Manager, and then we'll go to Councilwoman Hiller.
Well, unless I'm misunderstanding the motion from her, if she included the Polk-Quincy in with the other geo-bonding that we would do, yes, we would have to reduce her other projects. So I guess that would be a clarifying question for her.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hiller?
And I did not. It is separate in the budget right now, and so my motion has to do with the block that is the geo-bond block. My comment about that was that if we, as long as we can get at or under our cap, we need to keep in mind accommodating as much as we can for that money, but the Polk-Quincy 20 million would not be included in that motion. Only the block that says geo-bonding for the general fund on the first page of the budget.
Versus the geo-bond special?
Correct. The Polk-Quincy was put in that budget with its own special section.
But it's still part of our borrowing ability?
That is correct.
Yes, it would be part, it is part of our borrowing ability, but the way she's phrasing it, if I'm understanding her correctly, is that all of the projects that are listed under general obligation bond, that compose of 12 million in year 2021, 9,619,000 in year 2022, and 9,374,000 in year 2023, would be allowed to happen as the project, and then Polk-Quincy would have its own funding source. In other words, it would be a separate project, not included at the total for those other projects above.
I just, not just for myself, but I think that for the rest of the council, I want to make sure that we have full clarity on this one. And the other concern that I personally have, I am, I'm super supportive of us, you know, going the route of being extremely frugal right now, but I understand that we also raised that cap a little bit so that we could do more road projects, and so that we were able to meet the requirement of our constituency so that we could meet the, what we needed so that we could raise our road process, our score for our roads, our PCI, up to like a 68 or a 70. So that's where I'm having pause, because I understand that this directly impacts road projects, and I want to make sure that we are holding steady to our constituents with our promise. Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a clarification, so right now, year 2021 is exempted under the original resolution, and 12 million is allowed?
Yes.
Is that correct? And then in the following two years, it's back to 9 million? Is that correct?
With, yes, there was a total of 31 million that would be available for those three years.
So we're excluding Polk-Quincy for purposes now, and if I'm looking at this correctly, it's 12 million, a little over 9, a little over 9.
Right.
I guess I'm not seeing the issue there. Secondly, I, we need to get this rolling. We need, we got a lot of other stuff to confront in the next few weeks, not the least of which is our current budget plus our 2021 budget. I think we're in a position with a few amendments that we can get this wrapped up tonight. I'd like to see that happen. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Clarification again, and I just went ahead and emailed that motion to everybody who's online and handed it out here, if that helps to look at it. But it's, my motion was for the all five years that display on that page, 2021 through 2025.
And I'd like...
Go ahead.
City Manager?
Thank you. I think one thing we need to clarify is that the resolution that was approved applies to the first three years of our five-year part of our budget, not two years four and five. I think in discussions that I've had with you, your desire is to see that our year four and five of our CIP be in the 9 million area rather than be expanded, and I think that's what you're getting at. But I think we need to remember the resolution, which was originally 27 million total over a three-year CIB, that is what the resolution states, not covering the five years. And so the request that you have is, the resolution is, actually covers a three-year period, covering, in the old time, 27 million, then it was amended to allow us to have up to 33 for a period of time for three years to do some additional street work. And so I think in some ways, a resolution stating that years four and five of our CIP be 9 million is probably more a pro to what we're trying, what you're trying to accomplish, is that we have, when we present a year four and five, that it be in the 9 million category. Is that accurate of your desire?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, at this point, I think that we're gonna, yes, Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mayor. These things get complicated, and I know that, and I tried to keep it simple. What I worry about is that when we, when the council voted to give the extra money for those couple years, in part, it was just to sustain doing street projects, because what has happened is we added a million a year for fleet, which never was in there before, and now the staff is wanting... And now the staff is wanting not just 1 million, but 2 million a year for facilities, and that pushes it up. And I think it does push it up, and it makes it uncomfortable, but we really have to address whether, whether we want to, we're just now getting that debt service fund down to where the council, prior to, even when I came on, wanted to see it, so that it minimized how much we're spending on interest and financing. If we let that creep up, whether it's because of Polk-Quincy or just regular expenses, we've begun to budget that cash. And so it, not only, if the more, when we borrow, it costs more, but also it, at a time when our budget is so tight, I personally want to see us thinking ahead about Polk-Quincy and other things, and forcing ourselves to look now at figuring out how to manage with what we have. Because in effect, that's a budget increase if we do more borrowing as well. Thank you.
Okay. Additional comments or questions? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, do you mind if I ask Councilwoman Hiller a question, a clarification on her amendment?
Thank you for asking. Absolutely, Deputy Mayor.
Now, Councilwoman Hiller, so just so I'm clear, what the city manager just asked was, your thought is right now, our borrowing is not, is not that 33 million over the three years, is that correct?
The borrowing is, with what's proposed for, in this budget, the borrowing for 2019, 20, and 21 would hit the full 33 million that was anticipated, whatever the number was, yeah, when the, when the increase was given, three years ago now. What our policy says is 27 million for every three-year segment. Obviously, if we're looking three years ahead, to me, we do keep that cap in our years four and five that we're looking at in detail, because if we approve it that way, then people are going to say, well, you should be able to move that forward. You approved it last year. What's the problem? But I also think we need to keep in mind things like Polk-Quincy and other developments that are percolating around, plus, we're going to have other expenses when Polk-Quincy goes in that are our local obligation. And so I just don't want us to move forward with our head in the sand about that. So I think we need to anticipate when we choose what we're going to put specifically in that CIB, so that, for instance, if we reduce some of those first-year expenses in 2021, that would leave us some bonding authority that we could look at in the, in the next year if we need it for Polk-Quincy.
Thank you. And if I could ask the city manager there, maybe Finance, what is our, and I know it's somewhere, probably buried in this huge document, but what is our anticipated borrowing, bonding for geo-bonds in '21, '22, and '23 right now under this proposal?
Under this proposal, it's the three-year amounts that you see at the bottom of the geo-sheet, which is 12,109,619,313. I'm sorry, I'll give you the total.
Okay.
The total is 30,993,638. So that's just under the 31 million that we're authorized to use in the three-year period.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dobler.
Yeah, just a short follow-up. I appreciate what Councilwoman Hiller is trying to do. I think if it weren't for Polk-Quincy, we, I assume we'd be looking at this and saying, it looks pretty good. It's under the, under the cap. We're doing what we have been trying to do. As the city manager said, Polk-Quincy is not only a once-in-a-lifetime project for this community, but somewhat unknown at this point. We don't know what the match is. We won't know exactly what the parameters are until we negotiate with the state of Kansas and execute a city-state agreement. So for, you know, to some extent, I think the Polk-Quincy numbers are placeholders right now. They show our commitment as a city to this project. And I would propose that we, you know, if we want to change the Polk-Quincy numbers around a little bit, 5 million a year for four years or something like that, seems reasonable. I think we need to leave a healthy, healthy commitment in there as we move forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dobler. Okay, at this point in time, I see no further questions or comments. We'll proceed with the roll call vote.
Mayor De La Isla?
No.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
No.
Ortiz?
Sorry, you were muted.
Councilmember Ortiz?
No.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla? Nager?
No.
Dobler?
No.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
No.
We have seven no, Councilmembers Hiller, Emerson, and Duncan voting yes, so the motion fails.
We move on to the next amendment. At this point, we move on to Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. No amendments at this time.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A lot of the amendments that I were going to make, I see some in Neal's. So I'm gonna just ask him when he brings his up. I really, really think that we need to go back to approving all of our projects before we do them, that they need to be brought back to the council. I don't care at what level or cost, I see that Neal had this in over and under half a mil, but I really think it's important, and I'll tell you why. You know, in our facilities, and I look at Fire Station 3, and that was long overdue, and it looks great. It looks really, really good. Only thing I'm disappointed with is that huge island in there. That's an island that could be used for some chef or, you know, buffet that we really don't need in there. Those guys could use half of that island, and I think it's important, when we get these projects and they're brought before us, that we have more time to zero in on the cost and what we need and what we don't need, as opposed to when they're thrown at us at the CIP and you're trying to scramble. And I just, I just think it's a, it's a good fit. So I could appreciate Neal's, I just got it when I got here, and I could appreciate seeing that. I think that's very, very important. Also, with the SORT program, I too have had healthy discussions with different council members, and times have changed. We didn't, we've got a lot of new tools that we didn't have before. So I want to make sure that we're not bonding money that we don't need when we've got, you know, the sidewalk, and we got this. And I think we need to really see if the SORT program's working as well, so that way we can get the most of our money and use the tools that we have. So I look at that, I want to go back to the leasing of vehicles, and I thought that we kind of got away with some of our snowplows and stuff like that, because we thought that it was easier to lease it than purchase, but that's something that we really need to dig into in our fleet services. And I know Karen's saying, well, 100,000 miles is great, it's not a whole lot of miles, it's not a whole lot of miles on my car, and it's not a whole lot of car miles on somebody else's. But you know, I remember when I first got on board and I drove with an officer who had 76,000 miles on his police vehicle, and every time he hit the brakes going around the corner, his car shut off. Our cars are not used like some of these other people, like they're using at high-rate speeds and the wear and tear, so I want us to really be able to take a look at that. And then I also wanted to, I didn't get a chance to ask this, so I know as the years went on, there was money from the zoo. Are we tapped out of all that that we owed? Are we even, even with that now? Or do we still have payments that we're making?
City manager?
You referencing the zoo or the parks and recreation?
The zoo. Well, actually, actually, I'm sorry, you're right. It's the Parks and Rec.
I believe there are still payments, but I would have to check with Finance to be sure that's what I would call...
Because I would like, I would, I know that that was supposed to save us a mil a year, and I'd like to know where we're at on that. Where's those, where's those savings at?
I'll find out, Councilwoman.
Um, there's something else. But I think this is a very good time, a crucial time, to look at our neighborhood, our NIA's and our revitalization and the SORT, and I think it's a good time that we really stop and see where we've been, where we need to go, and the new tools that we have. I appreciate Karen bringing that up, because she's, she's correct. We can pull from different sources, and I want to make sure that we're doing that. But I, I know we've shortened our meetings, and I know that that was one of the things that was cut out, that we don't approve everything, but I think that's very detrimental. I think that's very crucial that we start doing that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Deputy Mayor.
Nothing at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilwoman Padilla?
Nothing specific, but I agree with Councilwoman Ortiz. A couple of the things that are still pending from Councilmember Duncan and Councilmember Dobler. I looked at those, and I have some support for some of the things that they have there. So I'd like to move forward with those, and that might help on the road, and for me at least, in deciding where I want to be more specific.
Councilwoman Nager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No amendments at this time.
Councilwoman Ortiz, yes.
I don't have anything from Duncan. Did he email us something?
Yes.
I'll listen to my email then. Thank you.
Councilwoman Duncan?
Seven's before eight.
Councilwoman Dobler, sorry. It's just the way that you're seated. I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
Actually, Mayor, I'd be willing to defer, because I, my amendment is more of a procedural, procedural issue as opposed to specific line items, so let Councilman Duncan go first.
Councilwoman Duncan?
Well, just to roadmap, I know we're going in a one-at-a-time order, and that's fine, but I will have three motions and requests to present to the body this evening. So I'll start with the first, which will be very different than everything I've supported up to this point and will here later. As we've gone through this process, even though I'm new here, you'll find I don't like to put stuff in if I don't have to, but my first motion does just that, so of course, right? And I would move to add two projects to the capital improvement budget for facilities for year 2021. Specifically, the projects are, and I should, this relates to the Tepica Performing Arts Center, enhancing stage power and distribution in an amount not to exceed $15,000, and facilitate Wi-Fi capability, including Ethernet routers and switches, in an amount not to exceed $4,500. If I get a second, I'm happy to present my reasoning and go forward. If there's no second, I won't waste your time.
Sorry.
We have a second by Councilman Dobler, so at this point in time, continue your explanation, Councilwoman Duncan.
So I was very careful in trying to pick several projects that don't break a bank. If you look at the list of capital improvement projects over there that T-PAC has put together through the years, it's about half a million dollars. And if you look at that list, about half, that facility will tell you is their responsibility to go find funding for, and the other half, I would argue, sort of falls into, we own the building, therefore, we should do some of that work. There are line items in this proposal that do address some needs of T-PAC, and I also am always aware of the fact that they also get operating dollars, and there's other costs associated. So I'm not at all saying the city doesn't do anything for T-PAC. But these are two things that they need to enhance what they're doing over there, and the second one, the $4,500 one that involves some wiring and other issues, could directly allow them to operate a different Wi-Fi that they could actually monetize. And right now, they can't, because having something someone can sponsor where you log in, it's just not possible. Stuff is old over there in that respect. So I also tried to pick something that they could actually then make money off of to do. So, and I think, as I expressed last week, while I appreciate that there are items in there for T-PAC, I've had concerns with the disconnect between the list that the facility has not matching up with the list that's in this project in terms of some of the things that are needed inside the building. So I would just simply ask that if there's any way that we think we can add these things to this budget, even though it's an addition, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
City manager, if I could ask a question?
Yes.
To you. I think that at one point in time, we had deemed a threshold for the things that we would actually put in the capital improvement budget.
Yes, there was a threshold that was established.
It was a minimum amount that had to meet in order for it to qualify for the CIP.
Correct. But one of the things that is interest related to this project is it is in the facilities' line item, which is an item where we group projects that are of lesser amount. So we have a working list of projects that we do, and then the 1.6 million that's in there right now then attacks that list of different projects, and some of them are less than that threshold.
Okay. Just making sure. Comments or questions from the rest of the body? Councilwoman Hiller?
Well, this is a very specific one, so either one of you might be able to answer. When you talk about the Wi-Fi capability, would that be specific to, I mean, it's part of the City Hall building. If it were enhanced on the T-PAC side, would it correspondingly enhance City Hall? And is there a need for that?
No. City Hall is in a good position relative to our Wi-Fi, both the employee and guest Wi-Fi.
I see. But, but the T-PAC does not have even the same level that the City Hall side has?
Correct. It's restricted. It's not as, is not as, we call it, it's not as beefed up as what we have in our, there is capability, but it's not as strong.
And if I could ask a second half to that, are these two items on that end page, or whatever it was, list of facility improvements that we already have?
In the current proposal?
Yeah.
No, these are separate. These are new items directly taken from the list that T-PAC has, that they maintain on a regular basis.
So what we need further is to get our staff to sync up with T-PAC's list, it sounds like?
Yeah, and I don't know what those conversations have been over the last six months, so I'm not disparaging that one way or the other. I just note that, that's been my, is that there's some disconnect, and obviously, you have to prioritize things. And getting things like the steps so that people don't fall is a priority, and that's part of what's in the current CIB. So I understand that, but I think at some point, we need to start, even if it's just little things, addressing the, a little more of the interior. And they're, they're doing some things on the HVAC and some other systems, so I don't discount those. But like I said, I tried to pick things that they could use tomorrow and enhance the experience there instantly in the, within the building.
Thank you. And if that's something that they really can't do, I, for a long time, have felt like we needed to make sure, if we want them to stand on their own feet and thrive, that we provide the ability for them to do that, and so I will support that when it comes around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor? Deputy Ma, oh, Council City Manager?
Thank you. Just to go to one of the things that Councilwoman Duncan said, I've had discussions with T-PAC, and one of the things that I would like to look at in the future is an arena fee that would be an allotment of money that you would charge with each ticket that would then go into a bank that, that T-PAC would then be able to use for these kind of projects. In other words, whatever they identify as being the most important on their list, that they would then have a pot of money that they could use dedicated to them, they would control it. I mean, we would work through, it would work through the city, but that it would be theirs to decide how it would be spent. And that way, those users of T-PAC would then be seeing the benefit and let the management decide where some of the enhancement-type projects such as this would be able to be funded. And we've had initial discussions, there is support. That occurred just before the pandemic hit, and we haven't had those discussions further. But I think that in the long run would be a way that we would fund some of these types of things in the future.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, kind of had a question, maybe for Councilman Duncan on this. The Wi-Fi... on this. The Wi-Fi, like, I'm currently on the Wi-Fi. Is that not the why, is that Wi-Fi not available in T-PAC?
Correct. It's its own, I won't say closed system, I guess, if you want to call it that. But, and I think part of that is, they are separate entities. Part of that is probably security. There's probably some security ration out there. And then, because what T-PAC needs to better available to do is, A, if you just go there for an event, it's hard to get on that Wi-Fi now. And it doesn't, it doesn't have the capability to get, if you have, if you have 2,000 people in the building, to actually, to do that. And I don't understand enough to know, if you want to set it up so you can monetize it and have sponsors, you have to have a certain capability without. But that's, the second thing is, if we want to have meetings there, you got to have the ability to do full teleconferencing, and it doesn't support that right now either. So if you wanted to do, right now, big Zoom meetings as we move forward, you wouldn't be able to do it as well right there.
But I guess I'll follow a question. This Wi-Fi I'm using is open Wi-Fi here in the building, and it's not available down there?
I think it stretches, it might be if you have 20 of us. I don't think it is if you have 1,000 of us. I mean, it's not, it's a, you know, a bandwidth issue.
Okay. I mean, it's not a lot of money, but I just don't understand the need. So it's, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala to be followed by Councilwoman Nager.
Thank you, Mayor. My question would be, you know, it's not very much money. However, do you have any idea, Spencer, what T-PAC does in the way of grant writing? I, I mean, I'm thinking that there are a number of grant possibilities out there that are $25,000 and below usually. And they will help with, you know, infrastructure, things that will help enhance a place that is already existing with the possibility of helping increase attendance, et cetera, beautification, et cetera. And I didn't know if you had any idea what, if there's much grant writing that goes on with T-PAC.
Well, I can tell you, and I don't have the list, we can send it to you, is that every year, they, they get a fair number of grants. Most of it's for programming or children's programs. I don't think there's been a specific facilities grant received for several years. And I also say, right before all of the COVID-19 hit, they were about to launch a fairly large capital campaign, and that's obviously been derailed. So I think their plan is to bring that back one, but whenever that'll happen, who knows at this point?
Councilwoman Nager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Duncan, do any of these improvements help enhance T-PAC's ability to put on, to host any sort of events or presentations in times like these when we can't have mass gatherings? Is that something that's being taken into consideration with their operating budget as well?
I can't speak in depth to that. I can tell you, if you notice, the Storm on Vale Event Center has done a few concerts over there since that. And I think T-PAC, they were free on Facebook, and T-PAC looked at doing that. And I think they did one event. But they had some issues with even just doing that because of the equipment over there. So in that respect, I can speak to that, but I can't speak any deeper than that.
Additional comments or questions for Councilman Duncan? Okay. If there's no other comments or questions, then we proceed with the vote by roll call.
Mayor De La Isla.
No.
Councilmembers Heller.
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala.
No.
Ortiz. Councilmember Ortiz.
No.
Emerson.
No.
Padilla.
Yes.
Nager.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
And Lesser.
Lesser, we can't hear you, sir.
No.
Hey, we have five yes and five no, so the motion fails.
Councilman Duncan, the additional amendments?
I do. Did anyone else, if we're going around the table, or you want me to go?
I think that the only two people left are you and, and Councilman Dobler wanted to have some additional ones. Councilman Lesser, I don't think you had, you didn't submit any proposals, so.
All right. And I did run these by legal. So I don't know whether that's good or bad, but I did make sure they at least looked at them, and they were, you know, not out of order, weird, or not written properly. The first is, is regards to this process itself. It's been a fascinating process as I've jumped into it. And from all indications, I've been told it's improved, but I think it still has a way to go. And so what I would like is to see us do is, I guess, compartmentalize this process a little bit, maybe put it in a little more orderly fashion. Because I feel like what happens now is, there is a lot in this document, and we are asked to pass a very large spending proposal with one yea or nay. And I think sometimes we have projects that we, some of us says, well, you know, in this area, I'd like to have further discussion, but I'm not going, I don't want to derail this process. But, but I'd also like to, you know, parts of it I'd like to push forward while we spend some more time on other portions of it. So I would move to request that the city manager change the review and approval process for future capital improvement projects by placing the projects into the following categories: utilities, facilities, neighborhoods, public safety, quality of life, streets, and traffic, and then other, if you need to create an other category for whatever, I forgot, and I'm amenable to those categories. And that we then approve those based per category as we move forward in this process. I think, for instance, this would have helped us through the Polk Quincy Project, because I think we could have said, it's in this category. And so let's put that a little farther top and move that forward and get it approved and moved on. And then we can focus on the neighborhoods portion, or the streets portion, or wherever that would fall. And so, and I think that would also give us a chance. We can still have big meetings. We don't have to have one meeting for every category. But I think then it allows us some flexibility if we think we've got areas we can get done and out, and other areas where we may want to spend more time on, and not, you know, and I'm not advocating we break apart this, they would still all be one document. But, so that would be my motion to maybe look at some sort of change in the process related to that.
Do we have a second?
I will second it, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Can I ask a question, though, Mayor?
No, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess from a legal standpoint, first of all, I totally agree. I want to change this process, and I think Councilmember Dobler is going to maybe also have some things to speak towards that. I guess my only question is, you're really talking about changing it for next year, right?
I am. I, I debated with myself, asking us to divide the question this evening. But then I compromised with myself and said, I'll, no, I'm not sure anyone's going to want to do that. And that would create some chaos. So this was my compromise was, yeah. But yes, I understand your, your asking, this doesn't relate specifically to this, making a change within this document this evening.
Right. So I guess I just don't know if the motion is in order because it's not a change to this document. But I totally agree and support your, so I guess if legal could rule on that, or?
It really doesn't pertain to the, this year's capital improvement budget, but I think you could take it up. I don't know if Councilmember Dobler, so I was looking at his proposal. And are you proposing that for next year as well?
No, it's for this year.
For this year?
Yeah.
Okay. And some of the categories that I heard Councilmember Duncan talk about kind of were different, or different and the same, I guess?
They were. My categories were simply taken from the chart that's within this document, but I'm not married to those. I mean, if there's a better way to structure it or, or line it up with Councilman Dobler, it's fine. It's, it still meets the same intent.
So is the motion in order?
Go ahead.
I guess then is the motion, is it, I guess, is the motion in order then here, or?
This pertains to the 2020, or, what are the years again?
2021 to 2030.
Two, 2022.
So it's, it's part of that. But I think what you need to approve this evening probably is going to be more in line if Councilmember Dobler's amendment talks about 2020 and is applicable going in. That's probably more in line with where we're at. I mean, it's been approved. I mean, we did approve it. You can, you can make that motion into 2021. 2020 is what Councilmember Dobler's talking about. I guess it just, it needs to mesh somehow. I mean, I don't know how, we can vote on yours and then.
Councilman Dobler? I just want to make sure that procedurally, we're, we're working together. So my question is, do you need to work with Councilman Duncan to make sure that both of you are on the same page so that we then have one unified motion?
I really don't believe these two proposals are at odds. I think mine, mine talks about project approval, doing it, doing some of the projects separately as opposed to all in one document. I believe Councilman Duncan is talking about separating the document in, at this time, next year, into areas for presentation and separate approval, if I'm correct. It all rolls into one. So I think they're two totally separate issues, really.
So my, my, sorry. So then my, my other one may fall into the same category. So would it be more appropriate at this point to go on to Councilman Dobler's, go through this process, and then address these motions when we're done with physically changing this document, so to speak?
Yes, because Councilmember Duncan, Councilmember Dobler wants to actually amend the resolution itself. So if you're talking about just presentation moving into years from now forward, then yeah, I think it's better to go first with, with Councilmember Dobler's.
I would, I would like to ask clarification, though, before we move to the other topic. One of the reasons that we structure the presentation as we do is by funding type in order to make sure that we know, in the case of general obligation bonds, it sometimes can be confusing if we pick, say, just streets, and we have funding for streets related to GEO bonds, half-cent sales tax, county half-cent sales tax. And it will require some additional work to, to be able to make that presentation in a manner that is, you know, you to keep track of this street projects being funded by this method. And so when we make that presentation, we'll have to work hard to develop something that makes it clear for you. Because right now, we make it by funding type. It makes it clear for you to know the total that's being done. Because now, those fundings will be in separate locations potentially throughout the document. Streets will be a little easier in that, in that case. But some of the projects that are funded with part GEO and part of other projects can be, it can be a little confusing, so.
So I have a thought on that, but I will withhold it until we go forward, and then we can discuss the, maybe the alternative to that.
Okay. Councilman Duncan, thank you so much for the grace in allowing us to go to this exercise. Then I guess, Councilman Dobler, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Question, do we still have a motion on the floor?
We do. At some point, you're going to need to withdraw the motion.
Yeah, we withdraw the motion.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I apologize for getting this out at the last minute. I kind of struggled with, with this for the past few days, and finally had an opportunity to sit down and put this in writing, and it made some sense to me. So I thought I'd bring it forward tonight. The city municipal code requires that the city council approve project budgets and amendments to those budgets, and that has not changed in however long it's, it's been in effect, a number of years. Up until a few years ago, each and every project came in front of the council for approval. I lived that side of it for a lot of years, and it's a pain. Every $30,000 sidewalk, small water lines, all kinds of things. It's, it's a drain on the staff. It's a drain on the council. And, you know, it made sense to do something different. So sometime in the last few years, under a previous city manager, this process apparently came into place where with the resolution with the CIP, we automatically approve all project budgets for the next three years. This, I, I think this is an issue because it doesn't allow a lot of oversight. Number one, the way project budgets were approved before, they were pretty close to the action point. You approved it, and a few months later, something was happening. Now we're approving projects that by the time three years comes, we've, we've forgotten about it. So we've really gone from one extreme to the other. Micro-management to really very little oversight. And I, I'm not disparaging staff. They're very professional. They do a good job. But our job is to watch what's going on with, and frankly, infrastructure and, and vehicles and the kind of things that are in CIP are a big part of what we do. And it just doesn't feel like we have that kind of control. So what I'm proposing here is to shift, not back to where we were, because I, I don't think we would like that very well, but to come partway back and perhaps regain a little bit of more direct oversight over the process. And I think what I've heard through this discussion on the CIP this year is, you know, we have a lot of street projects and other projects that are well-defined in the CIP. The budget's there. You can see what the project is, 10th Street from here to there, how much it costs, where the funding sources are. I don't think we need to change that. I think those are okay. There seems to be other areas, though, and I've listed them, facilities, sidewalks, neighborhood infrastructure, and fleet, where we just kind of have a lump sum amount. Maybe we're doing some zippers and other things. I don't know. But just not, you know, we, we don't know what we're approving. We're approving a pot of money. So what I'm proposing is that the projects in those areas, and I've listed them in the amendment, that, that staff develops a list every year of those projects, and that gets approved by council. I don't think every single project needs to come in front of the council. Let's get a list. I assume we have a facilities plan. I assume we have a plan for what sidewalks we're going to replace. Assume we have neighborhood infrastructure plans and fleet replacement plans. I know we do. I've seen them. But let's take those plans, reduce them to a list, put it in front of the council once a year, and we approve it, and we move on. Obviously, as with any CIP approval, any project approval, it's open to amendments. You can amend the CIP anytime you want. So if something drastically changes, you could come back with that list and amend it. I also struggle with the half-cent citywide sales tax. We made a commitment to the constituents to spend that money on street repairs. You know, for most, most folks, that means fix the potholes, mill an overlay, maybe some major street reconstruction where necessary. And again, it feels like we've kind of lost a little bit of control over that. You know, we have a lot of projects that have GEO funding, federal funding, and then we throw in some half-cent sales tax funding. Is that the right place? Maybe it is. But I think we need a chance to discuss those closer to the time that, that they happen. So for that part of the amendment, all one, one amendment at this point, is to require that council approves project budgets for all projects over $500,000. And that's a total of all funding sources. So even if it's only 100,000 sales tax, if there's another 600,000 from some other source, those projects come in front of the council if they have half-cent citywide sales tax money. For the projects under 500,000, again, an annual list. So there's, there's four items in the CIP: street contract, pavement maintenance program, curb and gutter replacement, pavement managed rehab and reconstruction, and alley repair. So again, those four items would come in front of the council once a year with a list, what streets are going to get repaired, what alleys are going to get repaired, and that would be approved, and obviously, again, be open to an amendment. I might pause ahead of the actual proposed amendment, which, you know, takes, takes words out and puts other words in. So I guess I would pause there and, and maybe ask if there's any question or clarification.
Questions or clarifications for Councilman Dobler? Deputy Mayor to be followed by Councilwoman Alcala, Valdivia Alcala, and Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Councilman Dobler, first of all, I'm, I'm very supportive of what your, what your aim is here. of what your, what your aim is here. Like you said, I think, I mean, I can remember it used to be every single contract came in front of, from the city council. I just, I had one clarification. Is it your thoughts that we would do individual approval on a projects over 500,000, but then an annual approval for everything under? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. I would be supportive of that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Dobler, I do agree that the moves that, you know, that you're talking about making here for the most part, although I do have a couple of questions, are, are seeking to regain more balance. And I think that that is definitely needed. And so I'm grateful that you brought this forward. I don't know if we're at this point yet, but I did want to ask you specifically about page 29 on the CIP, where you say in the amendment for it to be deleted, and that would be where the project description is for the SORT amount from 2021 to 2030, the amount of $10,900,000. Or am I ahead of myself, Mayor? Can I go ahead and ask questions on that?
I, I can answer that.
Okay. Okay. So this is, this is just some confusion I have on this. What you're saying in, in the proposed amendment to delete the page, meaning those SORT projects annually would now come before, you're seeking for them to come before the council. So this is in no way, shape, or form going to harm NIAs and NIA involvement in the SORT application process. I mean, so are we saying that they still go, neighborhoods still go through the SORT application process and they don't get approved by Neighborhood Relations Committee? Or I don't know if that would be the CAC or who exactly does the approval. It would then come to council and council would be the one approving maybe a project in District 1 or District 3 or District 2 or what have you. Is that correct?
Mayor, can I answer that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, you're correct. The, the way the resolution's written right now, it's kind of a blanket approval. So it says we're approving all these projects, list all the page numbers. And what I'm proposing doesn't take away that approval for a lot of the projects, so those numbers, page numbers stay in. I'm just removing the page numbers for, again, facilities, sidewalks, neighborhood infrastructure, and fleet, and putting those in the portion of the amendment that says they come before the council.
Okay. Well, and I understand that. But I'm digging a little bit deeper into what that may look like for changes with SORT grant application would now be approved by the council. And my concern always is that disempowerment of NIAs possibly, because we're always working, at least in, in my district, to enhance them and get more people involved, where there wouldn't be the perception of that, oh, these guys are gonna be making all the moves for it. And so what's the possibility of us being able to get this? Whereas I believe, and I could be wrong, I believe that there is a more collective approach with NIA or in Neighborhood Relations doing the approval of it. And I could be wrong on that. But I, I'm trying to seek clarity. For those that know more about, I don't know if that's something that Councilman Hiller knows more about, that approval process or, I, I'm just trying to gain some clarity on that part.
Mayor, could I respond to that quickly?
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you. I understand what you're saying. You know, what I tried to do was pick those categories that were wide open, where we're just listing a pot of money and not the, not specific projects. The intent was that a list of projects comes in front of the council for approval. But I understand your, your point in that that would subject, even with that list, would subject individual projects perhaps to, to removal or whatever. I, I am frankly, I'm wide open to amendments that would remove any of these categories if the council thinks are not necessary. I was just looking for those, those pots of money that are undefined, so.
I, I, it's a big pot of money, that's for sure. And I was looking over staff's responses to some of the questions, and one of those was about, you know, SORT and, and then also looking at a draft where Councilman Hiller was looking for some changes. And I guess with, with this one, specifically with SORT, I'm always, I always think that improvements are good. I, I always have concerns, though, of the neighborhood impact being lessened and more votes going into something that may not be as aware of the intimacies of a particular district that is considered intensive care, you know, at risk or what have you. So I believe in a lot of what you're proposing, and I don't know, I would just have to listen to, to more feedback from the council, but I don't know if that particular SORT pocket, at least without more talking to see how it would evolve, that, that I would, could support that particular section. But the rest, I'm, I'm very on board with. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. I, I do like the, the list project. I too, with the SORT, I, I think that we need to revamp that, Neil, to make sure that there's a cutoff date and we don't, somebody that's been approved doesn't get disapproved, you know. But where did you come up with the numbers for project less than 500,000? Because I, I would like, like to see it a little bit lower. I, I'd just like to know your feedback on that. I, I just feel like, when I'm looking at this and it says for project less than 500 utilizing funds from the half-cent sales tax, because the half-cent sales tax, we can only use with existing streets, correct? So if, if we can only use the half-cent sales tax with existing streets, and, and that's, that's one of the issues that I have. In certain districts, there's, there's no curbs or gutters or sidewalks. And so the same street that we take out is the same street that we have to put back in. So I'm, I'm just curious your thought on that, Neil.
Councilwoman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. 500,000's a pretty good-sized project, and my intent was not to, you know, to force every $30,000 mill and overlay to come in front of the council. I think those, those are the projects that need to be on a list that comes in front of the council, not individually. And the other thing is, the intent is to, the 500,000 is the entire project. So if you look at some of the major projects in the CIP, you'll have geo-bonding for 300,000, federal funds for 100,000, and then the half-cent sales tax, it fills the gap, another 100,000. Those are the projects I think that we need to discuss. Is that a proper use of the half-cent sales tax? Maybe it is, again. Just feels like those are, those bigger projects are the ones we, we need to talk about. But I'm certainly open to, you know, discussing the limits. Thank you.
And so would you go maybe, and I, and I don't know, is 100,000, is that too low?
Well, 125,000 is our bonding threshold.
Mayor, can I respond to that?
Councilwoman Dobler?
Thank you. You know, I don't really know what the number is. And I guess what I would suggest, since we're gonna revisit this resolution every year at this same time, probably assuming this passes tonight with similar language in it, maybe we try it for a year and see, you know, maybe next year, we say, you know, 500,000's too high and we need to, to bring it down a little bit. Just give it a, give it a year trial run and see, see how it works.
And Councilwoman Dobler, that, based on the conversation that we're all having here and the question that Councilwoman Ortiz is asking, I was going to, my, my take on it would be for us to start for this year with that $500,000 threshold, because it would allow us a chance to keep having those conversations. And then if we feel like it's sufficient, like you said, I think that we'll bring this back again next year, so.
I, if I may, Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman, to be followed by the city manager.
I could, I could probably go along with that, with that caveat. I just, I just, when I think of projects, I always go back to 21st Street and where we didn't have any sidewalks on, you know, from California to Whittingburg Road. And so it's always important to me, and, and I remember, and I can't even think of what project it was, when the deputy mayor got on board and he said, we could have done that for cheaper and we didn't. That's why I want to make sure that we start looking at all these projects, because we have a couple of people that are specialists in these fields that could probably help us save some money. Thank you, Neil. Appreciate it.
No comments, uh, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things that I, I would like to get clarification on, just to understand. Trying to understand with, with Councilwoman Dobler's proposal, when would the list of projects be brought? Would there still be, when we're doing the budget, would there be a placeholder and then we would bring it in January, something like that? So you would still approve the spot, but before any of that action could occur, we would bring the list? Because sometimes we don't know till January, February, which street we want to do a mill and overlay on, you know, all those types of things. It would still give us the flexibility on what to propose. Is that, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah. Mayor?
Councilwoman Dobler?
Yeah, exactly. City manager, nothing in your, in the line item proposal changes. So there's no, there's no list of projects under any of these categories, nor did, did I anticipate there would be any. That list would, just like a project budget used to, it would have, you'd have to have approval of that list before you could do the project. So whatever point during the year that, that works, you know, middle of the year, towards the end of the year, for the next, next year, you'd develop that list.
Okay.
And again, if, you know, that list can be amended, so it would be, I don't think it'd be easy, but it would be straightforward in, in amending, adding to or removing from that list. Thank you.
And a follow-up question.
Yes, city manager.
Sorry. With that, you wouldn't be looking for us to bring approval of a consultant, approval of a contractor, any of that. It would simply be the project proposal. So we want to do X Street, Y Street, Z Street this year for an overlay. We want to do these streets for sidewalk replacements. That, that's what you're intending?
Yeah. Absolutely. It's a project, project budget, total project budget.
Mayor?
City manager.
One of the things that was brought up by Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala was the issue of the SORT grant and the proposals and approval of those. I was reminded by Director Feiner that the city council actually approves the neighborhood plan. And so the projects themselves are approved, so that would not negate. If we selected a, a neighborhood for a SORT grant, they would make the recommendations on what projects would be done. So council would approve each individual project, so there would be not an opportunity for it to be diverted to some other location other than where intended in, within regards to that NIA. So I think that would protect the issues related to the concerns of diversion of any SORT money, because the council would be approving the plan proposed by the neighborhood.
Okay. So that, oh, Mayor, may I follow up?
Absolutely, Councilwoman Dobler.
Thank you. So you're saying that would still fall within the intent of this amendment? It would just be the city council's approving, approving the process through...
Right. It would, it would come at a later date in the process, not when we would maybe be looking at the budget or when we'd be looking at doing an overlay. It would likely come, those projects are approved by the CAC, Citizens Advisory Committee, in September, and then brought to the council for approval in October. And so then that list would then be there. And then you would see that and it already would have been, we're a year ahead with related allocation of money to that. So it would fit within the, the basic tenet that you're looking at with regards to individual projects. What we would spend the money on would be approved by the governing body.
Mayor, could I follow up?
Absolutely, followed by Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala.
And I guess what I would propose then is to change, and I haven't read the amendment language yet, I will do that in a minute. So for neighborhoods, as opposed to a list, the amendment could say something like other approval process, which would be the, I assume, the current approval process for the SORT project. Thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Okay. So what we're saying, the bottom line is, is that your city manager, you're saying that this already comes before the council.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, Neil, you went and said after that, I didn't grab what she said, after the city manager said his piece. What you just said, I lost it. Can you repeat it?
Certainly. I said the, the amendment, which I haven't read yet, but, but you have in front of you, I would propose that we, we add language that, that would say something to the effect of approval of a single list or other approval process, which would be the, the current process. So the neighborhoods would continue to go through their current approval process, would still meet the intent of this, this amendment, but it wouldn't, wouldn't be an extra step in front of the council.
Okay. Because again, I'm, I'm just looking at what's gonna keep the neighborhood involvement in NIAs and, and the discussions, because they, you know, they didn't know that this was happening. So can I, I guess I would ask legal, is there any, any major changes in, in language that's gonna happen here or...
Councilmember Dobler has a proposal, the proposed language, that will adjust the resolution.
Mayor, could I speak?
Absolutely, sir. Sorry. I was saying that while I was muted.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. You know, the more I think about this, it appears that the neighborhood infrastructure, the SORT program, already has separate approval. So even though it gets approved in the CIP, those projects come back, after it goes through the neighborhood process, it comes back in front of the
Correct.
city council for, for approval. City attorney, I think maybe the easiest way would just be to remove the neighborhood infrastructure out of this, because it already meets the intent of what I'm trying to accomplish here. And I think that would, would help everybody. Thank you.
Most to approve.
Then we have a, a motion and a second, because I'm sure that Councilwoman Dobler made the motion, right?
Yeah, I have not read the resolution.
Hasn't read yet.
Yes.
Oh, okay. So before we have that motion, Councilwoman Valdivia, can we have that full motion right now, so that you can second it? Councilwoman Dobler, could you read your motion?
I will do that. It's rather lengthy, so I may need a little bit help, a little bit of help from the city attorney. So the proposed amendment, and this goes to the resolution that you have in front of you tonight, lines 27 and 28 originally said delete 27, pages 27 through 29, but we're gonna leave page 29 in. So the amendment will say lines 27 and 28, delete 27 and 28, pages 27 and 28 from that. Line 28 will delete the number 32, page 32. And then on line 32, at the end of the geo-bonded projects paragraph, I would like to add the sentence, "All projects listed on pages 27 through 28 and page 32 shall be approved by the council annually and may be submitted for approval as a single list." list for each of the following areas: facilities, sidewalks, and fleet replacement." So I have taken neighborhood infrastructure out of that portion of the amendment. Uh, line 48, under cash-funded projects, uh, I'd like to remove pages 112 through 121, pages 126 through 130. On line 53, at the end of that paragraph, add the statement, "All projects funded in part or totally with the half-cent citywide sales tax and with a total project budget of over $500,000, including all funding sources, shall have a project budget approved by the City Council. For projects less than $500,000 utilizing funds from the half-cent citywide sales tax, the council shall annually approve a list of projects." And that would be the amendment.
So we have a motion as amended and a second by Councilwoman Valdivia. Additional comments or questions? Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and I'll address these to my colleague here. I love this. Um, I've, I've heard a lot of conversation from the council about this, but this is the first time I've read it. So I'm trying to scramble and, and understand. In particular, um, the questions, first questions have to do with timing. So in your proposal, just reading like the 1, 2, 3, is what you're suggesting that the major geo-bonded projects are automatically included at the time that the, um, the day that the budget is passed? And that's just for the CIB?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, and then the requiring the annual list of projects to be approved, um, a concern that I'd had while thinking about this same subject was that if they didn't already know by May what projects they wanted to do. Some of these, like fleet, it's a little easier to buy a car, but if you're going to buy a fire engine, you have to order it 18 months out, or at least be prepared, you, you've got this rotation. Um, I've gotten caught short a bit on, when things were happening in my district, the sidewalks, for instance, um, sidewalks, some of those projects are pretty big projects, and for the staff to be prepared to get them engineered and bid in the middle of the winter in order to have them actually done in, in like the following year, they'd need to know. So this is a little bit of a mixed bag, but I was, I was sort of hoping that we could have those projects listed in the CIP book for whatever year one of that CIB was, just to, for some reassurance that they really did, had thought it ahead, and that we also, in, those of us that have NIAs probably are interacting a little more with our residents than some others, but even so, to know that sidewalks are coming up in advance of when the project's about to start. Um, just wondered.
Mayor, could I respond?
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you. A good point. I, I will point out that the fleet replacement, your comment about the fire trucks, they are not in this. The fleet replacement is the public works.
Okay.
Uh, again, I see this as a trial run. Let's see how this works. So recognizing that some of those bigger purchases are far-reaching, as you mentioned, I did not include those. Um, I guess I don't understand the, what we're proposing here is, i- if, if this passes, it's at the end of May, before a project can start in 2021, it has to be on a list that's approved by the City Council. That could be June 1 of this year, it could be December 1. Uh, so it seems like there should be enough timing in there to get that. I mean, you're right, there should be a list already developed, but I didn't see it in the CIP, so.
We used to get those.
Yeah.
And they, they dropped out.
I think this is a great way to get them back.
Um, that, that's what I was hoping, and that's why I wondered. And it sounds like your vision is then that this, in, in number two, they might come at different times. Not, not all, and, and I guess one of the things that came this time was that the fire equipment was grouped together, and it turned out that there was conversation about the hazmat truck or, you know, there might be some other time about an aerial. And if they're grouped together at the time we pass the budget, we don't know what's in there.
Right.
And so, again.
Which, Mayor, could I respond?
Yes, sir.
So I think the way the language is written, uh, for the sales tax projects, the big projects, $500,000 and over, would come in front of the council. So they could come at any time after, after the budget approval, and probably will, I would guess. But everything under that is an annual, a list is approved annually. Um, and that also goes for facilities, sidewalks, and fleet replacements. So the timing of that list, um, who knows? I guess we'll see how that works, but you would assume it'd come fairly quickly after the approval of the CIB.
And if I may, Mayor, would you expect, was your, was your thought under this 3D with the small projects and half-cent sales tax, that they would, we would get all four of them listed at the same time? It's, it's just not clear, or we could get them all over the place.
I, I think it is clear. It says, "For projects less than $500,000 utilizing funds from the half-cent citywide sales tax, the council shall annually approve a list of projects."
But I didn't know if, if, you have four subs under there. So we could theoretically get the street preventive maintenance program in August, and we could get the curb and gutter in November. Your thought was that this is a single, that all of these would be reported simultaneously?
Right. Everything above proposed amendment is just information. So projects under $500,000 could, they could, and, and prob, most likely will be comprised, that list will be comprised of projects that fall in all of those four areas, but one list. And then the bigger projects are going to come whenever they, whenever they come. So it wasn't the intent to separate out into, into those four subs under, under B there.
Okay, I have several hands. I have Councilwoman Nager waiting. I have Deputy Mayor and Councilwoman Ortiz as well. Councilwoman Nager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to let you know, Councilman Dobler, I really appreciate what you've done here. I think it's a good way to go ahead and make sure that we are not bogging down the council and we're not bogging down the community with these smaller projects, that we really want to hit the ground running and make these improvements, so people can see their city government working for them and their community. But I think it also allows for us to really digest, discuss, and consider how we're spending our resources on these larger projects, and really make sure that we have, um, the community involvement. And that, even if we, I feel like with some of these larger projects, there is community involvement several years before, and that by the time the project is actually done, we're at a different point. So I think this is a great move. Thank you for doing this. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Councilman Dobler, just, just, I guess, a clarification on the, on the timing of the approvals. So say like with the street project, we now have this three-year window, right, where the first year, they're acquiring right away, they're doing the engineering, and then the second year is utility relocation, the third year, would we be just approving the project at first, when it goes out for design, basically? Or do you envision approving construction contracts?
No, just one project budget approval.
Okay, thank you.
Essentially the same one that's in the, the, the book right now, only it comes closer to the kickoff of the project.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Neil, you also had on here, finally, I'd like to amend the approval of the funding of the Polk Quincy BiDoc. That was not in your amendment or proposal, was it?
It's not at this time. I was, uh, they're two separate issues.
Okay, thank you.
So I was going to hit that later. Thank you.
All right. I think that we have, Councilman Lesser?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Neil, I, I, I too want to say, uh, I, I completely support, uh, this, and I appreciate your work and diligence in, in doing so. Um, the only, only thing I would, uh, uh, like to, to propose is a friendly amended, a friendly amendment to, uh, split the difference a little bit in regards to, um, some of the concern that, that Councilwoman, or Councilwoman Ortiz, uh, also shared is, I, I would like to see that instead of the $500 limit, uh, $500,000 limit, um, have that, uh, limit be, uh, let's just say, uh, half of that, say $250,000. Um, the reason I say that is, I still think that's a, a significant, uh, expenditure, and my thought process is, um, I would rather err on the side of, uh, initially maybe having more come in front of us than we would like, than, than things not coming in front of us that we would have liked to have had. Um, you know, quite frankly, I, I bring up the, the 21st, uh, 21st Street and I-70 project, something like that, that I would have liked to have seen come in front of us and, and would not have, have met that threshold. So, um, that would be my, uh, amend, friendly amendment, that I would, uh, I would be more comfortable starting at that amount, and then if we realize, you know, hey, we're getting, we're getting, there's too many of these, this amount is, is too low, then possibly looking at, then upping it versus, um, just the opposite.
Mayor, I'd be willing to accept that.
Councilwoman Dobler?
Yeah, I'd be willing to accept that friendly amendment. I think, um, I think the beauty of this, again, is this comes in front of us every year. So we, we tried out and, you know, even, even at mid-year, I suppose we could amend this resolution if, if it's not working out as we anticipated. So yes, I will accept that amendment.
So what was the number? 250?
Yes, Councilwoman Hiller?
Um, a clarification and a question. I'll, I'll start with the question. Uh, Councilman Dobler, is there a particular reason why you did not include any of the utility projects in this proposal?
You know, I looked at that, Councilman Hiller. Um, utility projects are pretty straightforward. Um, and again, just trying to, number one, kind of focus on the geo-bonded side and the half-cent sales tax, uh, just seemed like a great place to start. And again, we, we try this out for a year and test drive it, and maybe we want to add to it next year. That's the only reason.
Thank you. If I can throw a comment in there, I, I mean, you all heard me make my presentation last week about the fact that I was more knowledgeable and more comfortable talking about the geo-bonds than the utilities, so I sure hoped someone else would. Um, we have, we have run into trouble before where the utilities just didn't get the attention that some of the more visible projects get. Um, we certainly had some comments from constituents about them. Um, and I would lean toward what Councilman Duncan was talking about. What I realized in those years when we approved all the projects was that it gave me, in a, in much smaller doses, I learned about what those projects are and how they work, so that it wasn't all, you know, 50 pages of projects at one fell swoop in, in the budgeting process only. So if we don't include them this year, I, I would think we should consider it so that they stay on our radar as well.
For next year or for this year?
Um, I'll throw that out and see if anybody else, um, I, I understand and I appreciate your approach, but I, I think we need to keep them in mind.
If I could respond, Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Dobler, to be followed by Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala.
You know, for one, one thing, we went through the rate increases just a few months ago and had a lot of discussion about, about the utilities. Um, I think, a- again, one of the issues with these kind of things is you start at point A and it snowballs, and before you're done, it's so complicated, nobody understands it. I would like to keep it simple, test drive it, and revise it next year, with all due respect.
Well, and I just wanted to bring it up, so, thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala?
Nothing after all. I'm sorry. Thanks.
Councilwoman Nager?
I was scratching my ear. Thank you.
At least y'all know I'm watching. So at this point in time, a City Manager?
Okay. Um, uh, wanna, a couple of quick things related to this. If a project was listed in the, um, for example, this year, a 2021 project, and it was approved in the budget, would there be a requirement to bring it back to the governing body for approval again? So in other words, if we approve it now in August, we would be able to do that project, continue doing that project through. When you would consider, I think when you answered the question of Councilman Emerson's, that if we approve year one for design, which we typically do the three, the two stages, if it was approved in, in, uh, year three for design, would we need to bring it back at a future time, or is that when it starts, you've approved a named project, and then we can move forward with it? Just trying to get clarification, understanding of where we need to bring these things back to, for approval.
Yeah, I, I understand. I would anticipate that a project gets one project budget approval. Um, again, if an amendment's necessary, those can come back in front of the, the council, but I would hope that we'd understand, heading into a project, we'd understand the total, total cost.
Right.
Plus or minus 10 or 15%, whatever the contingency is. That's the budget that gets approved in year one. We get down the road to year three on some of these long projects and need an amendment, then
Okay.
we would have to come back, amend the CIP. I think we're talking, you know, these aren't the huge projects.
Right.
We're not, we're not talking about those right now. These are the smaller
Right.
maintenance projects, street repair projects. I think they're, most of them are quick hitting, uh, in one year, probably going to see most of them through, I would think.
I just wanted to clarify that we weren't going to change how we've been doing the larger projects related to that.
No.
The last thing I had was, um, as far as utilities, and you brought that up, I mean, as we presented in a previous year when we've done our workshops, we oftentimes provide a list of the water lines that we intend to do. So even though it wouldn't be required, staff can produce the list of intended projects related to water lines as we go into a year, intended projects in our collection system that aren't named projects. You know, the six and a half million dollars we're going to do in water line replacement, we know what ones we intend to do, and so we can provide that list to the governing body without needing to gain approval, just make you aware of what they are.
Yeah, Mayor, if I could?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I think that's a great idea. I think it serves two purposes. One, we, we ask utilities, I recall when we passed the rate increases in, whenever that was, um, like, you know, you, you've got some rate increases, make sure we know what you're doing with it. So I think that would serve two purposes, not only to give us a list of those water line projects, because that's really what we're after. I think people want to know, okay, we're approving $8 million for street repairs, where are they going? What's the plan? Um, I think utilities has done an excellent job of developing their plan, uh, asset management, things like that. They've just had a head start, it's nothing, I mean, we're getting there definitely on the, on the street side, uh, with the pavement management plan. Now we need to bring it that next step and develop those, those list of projects and a, and a finely tuned plan. Thank you.
City Manager, do you feel like you have clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I think that at this point in time, we have a motion and we have a second, and we've had ample discussion on this item. Thank you very much for that discussion, very well needed. Uh, at this point in time, I think that if everybody else is ready, we'll proceed with the vote by roll call.
Mayor DeLa Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yes.
And having voted yes, the amendment passes. Councilman Dobler, are you done with your amendments, or are we ready, and are we ready to go to Councilman Duncan?
Actually, I do have one more, and I'm not sure if it
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure if it even fits into this. I'll, I'll I'm not sure if it even fits into this. I'll, I'll ask the city attorney. What I would like in, you know, as we discussed, the Polquency Viaduct, which we're all extremely thrilled to be selected, we do know that there's a local participation element to this, and it's all supposition until a city-state agreement appears and, for signature. And I guess, I'm not sure exactly what the current process is. I assume those, those documents do not come in front of the council at this point. And generally, they're the federally funded projects that have state participation. What I would like to see is the, the city-state agreement that ties us to funding, local funding for Polquency come in front of the city council for approval. I guess that could just be made as a request to the city manager. I don't think it needs to be in an amendment. Just, just a request. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Duncan.
All right. Well, two things. I will slightly pull back my earlier amendments caveat, and I'll get to my second one. You know, I've spent 15 years representing Kansas in front of legislation. For anyone who's had the pleasure of going to a hearing there, you always know there's three ways to submit testimony. Oh, my mic's off. My mic's off. There we go. Let's try this again. I know, I know. I'll start, I'll start over here. I was saying that I've spent 15 years as a, representing Kansas in front of the state legislature. And when you show up to a hearing, you can either do pro, con, or neutral with concerns. I think only once in 15 years, I've testified neutral with concerns because my attitude has always been, if you have concerns, then you don't really support what you have in front of you. And my problem with this process has been, I feel very neutral with concerns because I think when we're given such a huge document to approve with one solo vote, it sort of forces you into that category. So, which is why my earlier motion tried to give us an opportunity to take a look at this in the future, broken down into some more manageable categories to give us the opportunity, both as elected officials and as staff, to look at those things in those compartments and move those forward. So instead of making that motion tonight, my request, because I understand the concern of the city managers, that some of these categories aren't just as simple as, you know, they don't all fit together. If there's a way over the next 30, 45 days, staff could sit down and see what those compartments would look like and so that we could, because this doesn't have to be decided this evening. And we could maybe come up with something that allows us to then bring back to the council as a motion that I can make that would do that, that would be appreciated. Because I don't want to steamroll the staff and put them in an awkward spot of saying, well, we get what you're trying to do, but it's not functionally the way you've put it forward. But I, I think everyone understands my intent. And I think in speaking with some other council members, there's some idea that that would be a, a way to go forward if we can do that. So I will pull that motion back if I can at least get an assurance, we can have those discussions and, and kind of work our way towards there in the future. That would be great. All right. So my second motion, and, and I will explain it, I'll make the motion and explain it if I get a second, is I would move to request that the city manager provide to the governing body an analysis of purchasing versus leasing. One, motor vehicles, and two, equipment exceeding $5,000. The analysis would be provided prior to consideration of the CIB, CIP in 2021. Like I said, if I get a second, I will explain my rationale here.
Do we have a second? Councilman Lesser, seconds. Absolutely, sir. Will you proceed?
I, this, I bring this forward because this has been discussed in at least two previous meetings we had regarding these projects. And there's been some other discussion, and Councilmember Ortiz brought it up again tonight. And I asked this question last week, and I basically got a polite, we're not going to do it. And that's okay. I understand staffs. And I understand it's complicated. I understand that there, it may not be moving forward once we do that analysis, something this body thinks is, is doable because of the way we pay for those vehicles and the bonding that's required and cash on hand. There's a lot of variables there. The problem I have is, we don't know if we don't have the information to be able to make those determinations and look at those. So since there doesn't seem to be too much momentum from one side, I feel like we'd like to provide some direction to please provide us that and give ample time to do it, a year. I don't want it next month. It doesn't, it wouldn't come into play for another year or so. And so that would be my motion this evening.
Now, answer questions for Councilman Duncan. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Duncan, thank you for bringing this forward. I, I totally support this. However, two questions, or I guess maybe a friendly amendment first. Equipment exceeding $5,000, you know, that's going to be, there's going to be lots of things, you know, that's even, I mean, a bobcat now is $80,000. So would you be, maybe be amenable to say like 25,000 because you're going to catch so many, I mean-
And that's fine. What I was trying to do was, I don't care about copy machines or all those little things in office equipment. So that number was really just chosen randomly. It was, okay, how much does a copy machine lease for versus a, so yes, I'd be fine with any number that's higher than that. It still hits the intent of the, of the motion.
And the other question would be, and your thing says prior to consideration of the CIB, CIP in 2021. So you're saying this for next year's, is that correct?
Correct. There's no way, obviously, we can do it for this, but it would give us a chance next year if we have to change whole cash out or, or how we purchase vehi, the list of vehicles next year. Give us an opportunity for that.
Okay. And just, I just, to clarify, you would be amenable to like raising that to like 25,000 or something?
Yeah, that's fine. We just really-
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala? You can raise your hand?
I don't think so.
All right. All right. Additional clarification for Councilman Duncan on his motion? Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if it, this exactly fits your motion, but it was a question that I had as I went through preparing for today. See if anybody else had that. There was, there was some detail in, in supplement five that we just got today about what vehicles, what, what fleet vehicles would be purchased. And there were, there was one sweet, street sweeper, an aerial truck with a bucket on it, a flatbed, and, and so on. I went back and looked at the list, and I thought when we were working on the snow room, well, yeah, on, on street sweeping policies a few years ago, that we only had three or four street sweepers. Yet the fleet list that we got has like seven. And, and then also, this one talked about buying a bucket truck and how traffic uses it for traffic lights. There are two different aerials with buckets on them just for traffic lights. I didn't know we replaced them that often. And, and I know forestry uses them a lot, but it ended up adding up to about seven aerial trucks and, and quite a few, more than I thought we had total in each of those. And so if somehow I'll look again at the list of what we have or what, what we need, I mean, we may have some old stuff sitting around, but I was surprised at how many we were, had on the fleet list and therefore needed to replace, arguably. If, if, if somehow, I don't know if it fits in your motion, but we could review that and clarify whether we really need every single one of the ones that were on that fleet list. Appreciate it.
Yeah, that's actually a limited number. And I think that you would find that with our traffic signals and the work that we do there, we need those. And then with only two or three aerials for our forestry crew, that's, that's just the right number. That if one goes down, we've had to rent them in the past. So it really is the need, the need that we have.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Dobler or Councilman Duncan? I can't see who asked the question.
It, it was me. Thank you.
Councilman Dobler?
Actually, I think that fits nicely into Councilman Duncan's proposal, because if I'm reading this, it says future years, 2022 and beyond. Is that what you were looking at? I mean, I was grappling with the grapple. I think that list is for 2022. So given his proposal, there would be an analysis at that point.
Okay. Well, part of it was beyond just purchasing or leasing. Do we need it at all?
Yeah.
That's where I was.
That'd be part of it.
Additional comments or questions for Council, uh, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess just a procedural question. So city attorney, if, would this simply be added to the bottom of a resolution that, like a council direction or something?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, this is going to be just a direction to the city manager-
Okay.
And not anything that's going to be part of this particular resolution.
Okay, so it's not an amendment to the resolution then?
No.
Okay.
Some of that I realize, when we're looking at a five or 10-year plan, it's hard to, you know, you got to make sure it's all in there though, so the, moving forward, we're, we're doing it.
Okay. Additional comments or clarification for Councilman Duncan? City Attorney?
I just have a question. I want to clarify exactly what the motion is. I know that there was a friendly amendment to up the amount from 5,000 to 25.
Correct.
And then there, how do we want to fit in? Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Good deal. All right.
Okay. Everybody is clear right now? If so, Councilwoman Hiller?
This is a standalone resolution.
Standalone motion.
Motion, resolution, remember? Okay. Thank you. Not related. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Additional comments before we proceed with the vote? City clerk, you may proceed with a roll call for the vote.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yes.
And having voted yes, the motion passes. At this point in time, I think that we have discussed every possible amendment that everybody had. And I don't mean it in a flippant way, by the way. City Attorney? Oh, I just see you raising your hand. I was going to ask the city attorney if at this point in time, what we need to do is make a final approval of the CIP budget overall with all of the amendments as included. So at this point in time, if there's no further amendments, do we have a motion to approve the CIP as amended? Councilwoman Nager?
Yes.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Nager. We have a second by Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala. Additional comments or questions on the CIP as approved? Seeing none, we proceed by voting by roll call.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Neutral yes. Yes.
And Lesser?
And one.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yes.
And having voted yes, the motion passes. I do have clarification for Councilman Duncan. What would be an excited yes? On a serious note, we move on to item C of the agenda as the clerk would read.
Got a hand?
Oh, yes, Deputy Mayor. Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess a point of personal privilege, is it possible to take like a three-minute break?
Absolutely, sir.
We're all calibrated here for like two hours behind this, so.
We, we will enter into a recess and we will reconvene the meeting in a few minutes.
Thank you.
C is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout declaring the necessity to repair, alter, reconstruct, enlarge, or improve the city's water, water pollution, and/or stormwater utility system through improvement projects authorized by the resolution and providing notice of intention authorizing the issuance of revenue bonds in the manner required by KSA 101201 at SEA.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. No changes were made in the utility budget for the CIP, so this resolution is good to go for approval.
Pleasure of the body. We have a second, a motion made by Councilman Dobler, a second by the Deputy Mayor. Seeing no comments or questions, we proceed by voting by roll call.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yes.
And having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to the non-action items as the clerk would read.
A is an update on the City of Topeka 2020 and 2021 operating budget.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Try and move close and speak slowly so that everyone at home can hear. I wanted to bring you up to date on the work that we're doing related to the 2020 budget and to the 2021 budget. Probably a little more detail on the 20 budget than in the 21 because we're still in the beginning stages of that. The work continues on the cost reductions that we're doing for personnel and non-personnel budget cuts. And, and we still plan to use a portion of reserves for our revenue shortfall. Actions have been taken related to reductions in some direct personnel costs. And also, we continue to work towards understanding what our shortfall may be. Finance staff has calculated what we could receive in related to a hiring freeze and the impact on the leaving of positions vacant through the rest of the year. We're looking at a savings of approximately $400,000 that we will see if all positions would be left vacant. Now, that doesn't take into consideration other future retirements or other departments of staff before the end of the year that may occur. The vacancy number and that dollar figure also includes leaving all police and fire department positions that are currently vacant through the entire year. Any type of looking at a academy or for either of those services would reduce that number. So we need to take that in consideration as we move forward related to reaching our target. So to that end, department directors and staff continue to evaluate additional options that they want to potentially use to reduce expenses. We've completed the research as it relates to what a day of furlough would provide the city in the way of savings. And that information is now known so that we have the ability to, we have the ability to, excuse me, we have the ability to look at that in the future, what options we may want to consider. As we receive the revenue numbers that we still are not aware of, both in the area of sales tax for May or June, decisions on when to start a police academy in the future, or a firefighter academy in the future, we're going to need to wait until we have a better handle on our revenues. I do understand the needs that we have in that area, but we need to ensure that it's financially feasible before we do so. The projections will be updated later, once we have both March, and then we'll continue to update once we have the May sales tax numbers in order for us to understand what we may need to do in the future. Understand that this is an ongoing situation that is evolving. We obviously don't know where the economy is going to go. And so for us to decide that we're done and say we're good is really not feasible to do. But I wanted to give you a little bit of an update that we have made some changes related to the, to the personnel, and analyze that. And so that's allowing us to, you know, feel good as we move forward to the next step, but also be very concerned that if this economy doesn't come back in the next seven months, that we may need to look at additional changes related to furloughs or other types of things still possible by the end of the year. So we've done the right work for right now, is the best way that I could put it. And that obviously more to follow as we get more details. Any questions related to 2020 budget?
Questions for City Manager? Yes, Councilwoman Ortiz, to be followed by Councilman Lesser.
And I can appreciate us looking at the budget and where we need to go and not doing any of the academies, even though it's, it's much, much, much needed. The only concern I have, City Manager, we need to figure this out, is the closing of Fire Station 1. I'd like to know- Station One. Um, I'd like to know, what, I thought we had callback money in the budget, and I'd like to know how much callback money is in the budget, uh, what happened to that? Because again, we cannot continue on to have these stations closed and, um, pulling from all sides of the city. And, um, again, we've been lucky, but I just, I would just cringe if our luck runs out. Um, and, and we need to, we need to really, really look at that. Um, I know before, the firefighters, when they were able to figure it out before they got put on such a tight ship, um, because we've got a lot of vacations coming up this summer that they put in, and they put in for their time off at the beginning of the year. That's how it works for them. Um, but we have got to do something. We've got to look at their schedules. We've got to figure something out, and they would always cover for each other, and we quit that a long time ago. Um, but I don't know what the plan is, but we need to come up with a plan because just to close it down and say it's okay, it's, it's not in my opinion. Um, it's been windy. People are burning. People are outside cutting trees with the stay-at-home order. Um, and, um, that's very, very concerning to me, um, because it affects all of Topeka, not just one district, because when you pull from one side, it takes double time to get to the other side. Um, so I look forward to see how much money we had figured in the budget for callback because I know we had figured some in, and, um, let's sit down to see what the problem is and how we can fix that, because if we're not gonna get academy together anytime soon, we're not gonna have people out there anytime soon. Um, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Lester, I think, was next, to be followed by Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala.
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, my concern, um, that I'd like to address, and I, I obviously, uh, do appreciate the situation we're in. One area, though, that I, I really feel that we need to be moving forward and looking at not, not if, but how we are gonna be able to fund a, a, a police academy in October or September. Um, you know, right now, um, you know, the information I've found is, is we have 18 vacancies. Um, July 1st, we're gonna have five more retirements, another one in August, um, and then possibly, you know, another projection of, because of the way the cycle kinda goes, um, in September, uh, six, six, and eight in, in December, which, um, puts us at a, uh, a very vulnerable position. So, um, this is one of those things that, that I, I, I think we need to look at how we're gonna, uh, have an academy versus if we're gonna have one. Um, and keeping in mind that, um, you know, th- this is the, these type of positions, um, uh, before these individuals are able to actually be street-ready, um, is, is, is a year roughly. So, um, and unfortunately, if, if, um, if, uh, the economy, um, continues to be as we are, or, um, we do see a, a, in the fall, a, another appearance of, of, of COVID, um, people are gonna become desperate, and, and we have to have the streets ready, um, um, for citizens and stuff. So, um, I know this is a difficult time, but I think there, there's, uh, there's room for us to look at that. I have faith in you, City Manager, that you'll look at this as well as in, uh, Chief Cockburn and looking at other areas possibly in, in, in his department that he can find his cuts. But, um, there again, I just really think all that information, um, validates, uh, not if we have one in September, October, but how do we accomplish that? Thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, City Manager, uh, I want to just articulate so that the public can know too that since about, mm, April 24th up until current, uh, Station One has been shut down approximately 10 times, and, uh, obviously there is the real concern, um, with public safety, um, there, and I know that it was mandated with, you know, no overtime, but however this needs to work to get the stations, all stations operating and open continuously for the safety of not only District Two, but the entire city, I will continue to push, um, because it's just not, um, I think a good way to present, especially during these hard times, to our city, to our constituents, uh, that because we're trying so hard to cut dollars that we're going to cut the possibility of, you know, of providing you the adequate services that you pay for with your tax dollars. I know things are tight, but public safety has to be not at the top of the list, and right now it feels like it's the top of the list with, uh, Station One being closed down within the last month or so, probably about 10 times. So, thank you.
See, no, he's on mute. I think, all right, I'll just talk. I think he's still on mute. And, and I'd sent this message to-
Oh, you can't hear me?
No, I couldn't hear you. I knew what you were saying. It's fine.
Councilwoman Valdivia, well, Councilman Duncan, take it away.
The state of Kansas has received $1.2 billion in federal grant money. Forty-five percent of that has to be given to local municipalities. Of course, a couple hundred million got to go right out the door to two municipalities that were, I believe Wichita area and someone else, because they met a magic, uh, population threshold that we don't meet. As of right now, there's about $345 million sitting there that has to go to local governments. Um, now, the legislature as we speak is fighting over who gets to distribute that, the governor's office or the legislature, and they will have that battle royale on Thursday, and we'll see where it shakes out. But what we know is, it has to be distributed by the end of this year. That was one of the stipulations, and it has to go to local governments. So I guess my question along with is, I have, are we, or how are we coding or tracking all of our directly expenses related to this pandemic, and are we ready that when those grant applications become available, we can show directly that, hey, this is how much money we have expended due to this crisis? Because that's how they'll be distributed. You have, you'll have to show a, a very specific loss related to the pandemic.
Yes, we have. We've been tracking that. Um, we haven't had that much in the way of expenses. Most of it relates-
They've had a ton, a lot.
Yes, we've had a lot, millions and millions of dollars.
Yeah, unfortunately not, and each department has a, a fund, uh, code that anything related to COVID, they're able to charge against so that we're able to track all of that information. So we're able to be able to track that and prepare for reimbursement request. Um, that's one of the things that's been the most difficult related to this for us, is that very little of what we've done, um, can we say was specifically done for COVID. So much of it has been done by the county and the county public health, and so, and, you know, of course, then the hospitals and so forth. But our specific reactions and actions that we've taken have been pretty much, I would say they're limited, and it hasn't been a drain on our resources specifically for this. Our biggest issue is the expected loss of revenue, and so that's where, um, that particular grant fund that you're mentioning may not be the help that we need. The help we need may have to come from another set of funding sources if it gets approved.
If I may add, like the HEROES, uh, package that is being discussed right now, uh, is another great option. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, but, City Manager, in those grants, doesn't that cover for our fire and safety and, um, preparing them because of the COVID, um, COVID, um, doesn't that pay and reimburse us? Because like, like the, like the police academy, we would have had it, but somebody caught it because of that. So wouldn't that pay for an, um, us to get started on that?
I don't think that that's considered a COVID-19 direct-related expense. We have used it for, um, firefighters that were exposed that had to miss, and we had to request overtime to fill back for some of that. So we did request some backfill time related to that because it was directly related to COVID exposure. Um, but we really, in relation to the, the Police Recruit Academy, the situation there, um, would not be a direct, uh, effort as far as I'm aware of to be able to request reimbursement.
Can we double check to make sure? Because to me, if he hadn't have got infected, then we would be having that. So I guess I'm a little bit concerned that they're saying anything related to that. Well, to me, that's related to that and the, the whole shutdown of the operation.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, I'll verify, but I, I really strongly would be surprised. I'd be very surprised if that was the case, that we would be able to, because the academy itself is not an effort that we're doing in order to address issues within the community related to COVID-19. So the academy is there to train our officers to be on the streets, and so I don't know how that you can connect the two as being, requiring funding from the federal government in order to fight the effort of COVID-19. That would be a stretch.
Well, if you could check, that would be great. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Padilla?
Thank you, Mayor.
Duncan, I see you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just wanna follow up a little bit on what Councilman Lester said. I have had an opportunity to visit with the City Manager, and I think you all know that I've been, uh, been a long-time supporter of emergency services, both fire and police, and, uh, it is a question I think that we're gonna struggle with right down to the end, and that will be, what is the priority? Is public safety our, a, our priority? And is it a priority at the expense of other things that we have in our city budget? And that's what it's gonna come down to. And I think all of us need to think a little bit about that, and what are we willing to give to have public safety still intact, fully funded to the degree that we can afford it? And, uh, it's just something that I think that we cannot, uh, skip on, and like Councilman Lester said, not if we will have one, but how we will have one, and how soon we can have one, because this is a long-term investment that we have to have for our city. So I appreciate every effort that the City Manager is doing. I asked my colleagues to really think hard about this, because that's gonna be a question I think that we won't be able to avoid. So, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Manager.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a correction. The figure that I had been giving for, uh, Station One being closed down was like right at the end of April. As of April 6th up until current, Station One, uh, because of, you know, the no overtime and the shortage of, uh, firefighters, et cetera, uh, has been actually closed down 29 times, and that to me is just unacceptable, and it's unacceptable putting, uh, Topeka citizens in, at that type of risk. So, thank you, Mayor.
Additional comments or questions for City Manager?
Go ahead.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm thinking back to whether it was a week or two weeks ago when we talked about our budget priorities, and the mayor phrased our, our motion very well, and I'm not gonna be able to repeat it, but the con, the, the essence of that conversation amongst us and with you was to look at that budget, that we wanted to make sure that, that, that we kinda took that 10,000-foot view, if you would, and, and looked at what was essential, what was most important, and, and that you can't just do hiring freezes and solve something like this, especially when we know it's gonna roll into 2021. So I wondered, and maybe you were gonna get this, to this about 2021, but when you talked to staff or even the public, um, did you encourage them to get that 10,000-foot view and make suggestions about how we could retool or restructure? Maybe there's some things that we've been doing for a long time that we take for granted, and good people do them, and so on, but they might not be essential. And, and when I think of those things, I kinda challenge myself to think of something that's at least $100,000 or more, because you don't get too far, you know, $50 at a time. You know, have we done that, and have we encouraged even employees to turn in either with their name on it or without ideas for how we might sort of reinvent city government? If we wanna protect police and fire, um, and of course, they'll do some tooling internally in their departments, but if we, if those are top priority, we're gonna have to figure out something else that we do to protect them. And so I, I wondered if, if you've initiated that kind of engagement yet with staff and with the public?
Yes, we have, and we're in the process of, you know, looking at the department. I think that one of the things that we're looking at is we're having already to do without. There are many departments that had positions that they were either intending to fill or had not been able to fill so far, um, through the year, that they're now doing without and having to work around and have someone else do it instead of the person that should be hired to do that work. And so those things are being analyzed, but when we look at it right now, not knowing how far we're going to go, and with the desire of the governing body to use more of the reserves initially before we go and make those kind of changes in depth, um, we're really looking at whether or not, uh, we will need to make any more of those changes related to 21, or 20. Um, some may occur. We're looking at, um, differing things as we really begin to dig into what happens in 21. A change may be identified that needs to be made for 21's budget that we can go ahead and make in 20 and realize savings for a period of the year beyond that. And so that's the way we're analyzing it to see if those are the kind of changes that need to be made. A lot of it has to do with just simply deciding that a vacant position will have to remain vacant, and we'll have to do without going into 21. And that's an easier thing to do than it is to tell another person that they're no longer going to be able to come to work. And so those are the time, the types of things that we're doing now.
Thank you. Um, if I could just respond for a moment, um, I think what's important is performance. We've worked really hard at that, and we have really great employees. I don't wanna see us doubling up on a, an employee that's, that's, that's a great producer. I mean, sometimes people have some more capacity, but we need to be realistic about what we've asked our people to do. So I, I really appreciate and respect looking at it from the bottom up, a, a person at a time, but I think we have to look at it from the top down in terms of what we're doing and, and as well.
Each department will be doing that. There is no way to get around it with what we're looking at for 21.
Thank you.
The one other thing that I would like to make a comment on related to Fire Station One, I understand the issues and concerns related to that, but one of the things that we were faced with, or I was faced with, was trying to decide when I told everyone else that we were going to have a fi, a hiring freeze, to then go and hire seven firefighters to put on staff. And so I asked the department to, in order to help to offset the expense of hiring seven individuals, that we go to the process of, of not doing callback. And I know that places things in jeopardy, but it is for the long haul, the better decision to make. In order to offset the additional costs we're going to have to have of hiring those seven firefighters, we will eventually have those firefighters in another three weeks. They will then be able to go to their department, and that's seven firefighters, and that will help with the staffing level that we have in each of those, each of those shifts. And so that will help to mitigate the issues that we're having right now of being able to field the right number of individuals to keep Station One open. So the long haul, this will get better. Once we get these people through the academy, things should turn around. But I will analyze the issue related to the callback money, um, and, uh, take a look at what amount of money we've saved related to that, related to the costs that we have for the firefighters.
Additional comments or questions for City Manager? Okay. City Manager, anything else you would like to-
Well, I wanna cover a few things as it relates to 2021. Um, the initial review we've done- The initial review we've done of the budget and expenses related to the guidance that you provided has led me to believe that substantial cuts are going to be likely necessary. Without a mill of a increase that we haven't done in the last seven years, we've been trimming around the edges related to our budget. With the decision that we will fill vacant positions in the Police and Fire Department, we are faced with that costing our city $1.2 million in order to be able to fill all of those positions roughly. We have other vacancy credits that unless those positions are specifically eliminated, you know, we would look at filling those positions. There are some that are specific types of positions that we haven't been able to fill, some of our engineering positions where we currently hire out some of the work where we should be able to do it internally. In addition to the costs that we have for filling the Police and Fire positions that we have, we also have built-in raises to each of the unions that are already currently under contract that we're going to have to fill, along with trying to keep pace related to our non-union staff. In addition, I'm looking at right now, a 3% reduction that we can expect for sales tax over the year. And that's going to be just shy of $1 million lost to our revenue. So, when I look at this, we probably should be predicting that we're going to lose about $5 million. And the concern that I have is that by taking hands off related to filling Fire and Police, that means we have to go to 30% of the budget in order to make a $5 million makeup, that, that 30% of the general fund. We are looking at, some departments will likely have to face 10% to 15% cuts in their budgets in their coming year, which is very substantial and will be difficult to do. I'm going to be following up in the very near future, tomorrow or the next day, with a more detailed memo that will have some of that information. Realize we are just at the beginning of this process and still doing estimates and pulling information together. We, because of COVID and some of the other things that have been going on, we're behind what we normally would have for a schedule for the budget. So, I need you to mark on your calendars right now, July 11th, as being the Saturday that we will have our budget workshop. Staff is due to turn in their information to finance on June 12th. Then they will do their work, then bring it to me, and then we'll eventually get it to you prior to that. But, July 11th, hopefully there are not too many conflicts in your schedules for that date, but that will be the date that we will have our operating budget workshop. Location to be determined, obviously, based on where we're at related to our restrictions in the reopening plan. That's a Saturday, by the way, sorry. That's the only way we can get it done, is through a long day of working on it.
I am there. Councilwoman Duncan, you had your hand up and you were patiently waiting. Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Question on the dates, because we were given dates some time ago that, that kind of blocked the whole end of being June for all of us.
Yes, you can.
The 23rd and the 30th, which normally would, would have been three weeks. Take those off?
Yes, take those off. Your mic.
Mine's off.
Oh, yours is on. Okay. Anyway, yes, you would take those off. The July 11th date will be the date the staff will work with you, will work on the budget. Where is my sheet? Oh, here it is. So, yes, the budget workshop for the general fund and other funds will be on July 11th. We will have it on the agenda for a budget overview on July 7th. So, you will have it likely the week before that. So, two weeks, I'm trying to see. Yeah. Hopefully, I guess our target right now, we're looking at, based on the sheet that we have, and we'll get this around to you, but July 19th, we would be releasing the budget to the council, approximately July, June 19th, excuse me, June 19th. And then, going before, for a brief overview of the budget on July 7th, and then having the workshop on July 11th. We'll need to do amendments on the 21st, and because we do not have a, because we do not have a meeting on August 4th, because that is primary day, we will likely have to have a public hearing on July 28th. That'll end up being a special council meeting to do final approval and have the hearing. So, and then we'll have the hearing then, and then the council would adopt the budget August 11th. So, I'll get this calendar to you, but the key date would be the July 11th date.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Councilman Dobler.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my fear is we're going to hit July 11th and have a big book of stuff to get through. I realize it's going to be out a couple of weeks ahead of time. Is there any way, I mean, really what we're talking about, the general fund, right?
Correct.
Sales tax funded, probably not a lot of issues, at least right now, we foresee on the, on the ad valorem side. When we start getting some information on that at an earlier date, even if it's unformatted, just, it sure be helpful to have as much information as possible in as small a dose as possible before we get to those discussions.
Okay. I agree, it would be nice, but I will say that with a caveat, remember, we do not have a budget manager right now. Jessica Lammendola is, who is doing a bunch of the work related to this. And so, this is an unfortunate situation, but it is where we're at. And we have some staff that we're trying to work with to help her with that. Need to work to establish that in more detail. But, I'm not, I'm not going to be able to promise you that I can do what you're asking, but we'll sit down, we'll talk about it. But I understand the issues and concerns of getting a big data dump at once and having to look at it.
Additional comments or questions? City Manager, anything else you would like to convey?
Not at this time.
All right. At this point in time, we have the public comment section that has been, those comments have been taken in by the city clerk. We move on to announcements. City Clerk?
No prelim agenda.
City Manager?
No additional announcements.
My only announcement is I'm very grateful to the state for us being selected. I want to thank all the people who were involved in this and want to specifically just thank Councilwoman Hiller. She has been devoting a lot of time to this even before she was on the council. And eventually, the magic, I don't know what it was, but we had the partnership, we have Joe Ledbetter, we've had several individuals in our community, Councilman Dobler, before he was Councilman Dobler, our staff, Dr. Peak, and other individuals, who we all had a great show. It was kind of interesting when we were in the second phase of having these meetings, and they would see us in a room and they're like, "We see you, Topeka." And, and it may be a little bit, you know, pushy on our behalf, but I think that everybody worked on this one. And the fact that we have this, this project that our community has been in desperate need of, is a huge testament to partnership, to all of us working together and advocating on the same direction. So, thank you all. City Manager, you were a part of this as well. Thank you, thank you, thank you for everybody that was a part of this effort. And then in some final words, I will like to say that to the family of Jaheem and to all the students, we had our students graduate 2020 right now, and in the middle of all of this, we lost a bright star. Nothing but beautiful things do I hear, even from my children, when we heard about the census loss, yet again, to gun violence. Violence through guns is not the answer, and it pains me to hear that we have youth in our community that are resorting to use of firearms, because it means that we have failed our kids if they feel like this is the only way that they have to solve their issues. So, I know that we have amazing parents and networks that are supporting our kids, but I think that, that it's, it's just another time for us to revisit, even in the midst of this virus and this crisis, the fact that this is an issue in our community, that we have to continue working with it, and our police officers can only do so much. It takes all of us loving on our kids, and our kids are our kids in District 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9. It's not just our kids and our neighbors' kids, it's all of our kids, we need to be there for them. So, Councilwoman Ortiz is nodding her head, like, yes, I've been advocating for these kids, but it's, it's a huge loss. And to the parents, our love is going towards you. May this not repeat again in our community. Councilwoman Nager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is very exciting as the city is starting, and the state are starting to open back up. Make sure that whenever you go out into public, that you're supporting our local businesses and that you're respecting all of the precautions that they are taking. It gets tiresome, it really does, but it's done in an effort to keep us all protected, to keep us all safe, and to make sure that we all rebound as, and as efficiently as possible. So, thank you for your efforts. And, be safe. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just echo what the mayor said. Really happy that we're part of the transportation plan, the 40 projects that were selected. This is the fourth, fourth time I've, I've been through the transportation plan, and really want to commend the state, Secretary Lorenz and, and her staff. Just a really good process of hearing from the different parts of the state. We were certainly heard and appreciate that, and, you know, it's, it's tough to think about sitting through an hour presentation without knowing whether Poliquancy was in or not. We heard within the first, probably 45 seconds of the governor's speech, and, and it was really gratifying to hear that. So, a lot of work ahead, doesn't guarantee us the project, but it certainly gets us on the, on the right road. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Duncan?
I just have two comments. The first is, obviously, it's been a tough few months for everybody out there. Some of the decisions we've had to make have been very tough, and we've had very serious conversations about what those decisions have had to be, including putting some of that on the city manager to, to make some very tough decisions. I don't think it should go without passing, as everybody read in the news today, as many of us up here already knew, that some of those changes have been structural changes within the city staff. And while I'm sure it brings those individuals very little solace, I don't want the moment to go by without thanking them for all the work they did for this city, for their efforts for, on behalf of the citizens of Topeka. All we can do at this point is wish them the best of luck and do what we can to help them move forward, but I do want to let them know, we are grateful for everything you did, and, and it's been a tough thing for everybody. The second thing is, this weekend is Memorial Day weekend, so I want to remind everybody, many of us, if not most of us, have individuals who have served or are serving in our armed forces, and so, I will remember them and recognize them this Memorial Day, and I hope everyone else does also. Thank you.
Councilman Leser?
Nothing.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll piggyback on what the mayor mentioned about Poliquancy. Yes, many of us have been working on it for years. I was thrilled to hear that we made the first round, but even more than that, we talked about the $20 million today in our meeting, for instance, we're ready. It's not a surprise that we now have to scramble around for. We are ready, and I'm, I'm proud of all of us for that, and including even having it, there are some other plans that have been emerging, and people have looked at them on Facebook. I've posted some of them, like the Emerging River South Plan, and people have said, "Well, what about Poliquancy? What does that do?" And I've been able to say, "It's in there." You know, to see it synchronized that way, the great work that, that the staff has done and, and so on, it, it's, it's a good time, it does feel good. I too want to thank our departing leadership team that was announced today. Appreciate all of you and the work that you've done and, and wish you well. We've, we've grown a lot in those years. And regarding Memorial Day, yes, that weekend is coming up. Everybody, I hope people are safe, manage to maybe start reconnecting with folks that they've otherwise only seen on a computer screen or talked to on the phone, but be safe, wear your mask, wash your hands, don't touch your face, all those things. Thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wishing everybody a safe and happy Memorial Day. I will also reiterate mask, washing hands, social distance when you have to. And also, I would like to extend early birthday wishes to my husband, who, his birthday is on Sun, or, no, wait, when is it? He will be 61, so happy birthday, John. Thanks.
Nothing, Mayor. Everyone have a great Memorial Day weekend.
You skipped Councilwoman Ortiz, sir.
I'm sorry. Sorry, 94.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. He's, he's been X-ing me out on a lot of things, a lot of things. I need to sit down and have a talk with him without my mask on, but with my gloves on there. Anyway, I just want to, Mayor, I appreciate you bringing up our young people, because they're, they're hurting right now. They're hurting because of all of this that's going on, and a lot of them are very disappointed with the, the graduation process. And if you see one of the kids or you know a graduate, do something special for them. You know, they feel like they've just kind of been robbed. This is the last week of school. School's been different for them. Grandson number one is going to slide into 8th grade, and I'm grateful for that, but, you know, this is just a trying time for them. So, if you have a good word for them, put in a good word to them and let them know this is life, and it changes. But I just wanted to send a shout out to all of the graduates, and, you know, I'm grateful that they're going to continue to, to move on and, and all that they've done and all their accomplishments. So, hopefully Emerson Construction will send out some gift cards to, not the Scots, but the Trojans, or several Trojans out there. And if you need some names, I can give them some. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Have a good, safe holiday weekend.
Thank you. Now, we go on to the deputy mayor, who said he had no comment.
Now, I really have nothing, Mayor. I do, I do hope everyone has a Memorial Day weekend. And go out there and spend money, people, we need the sales tax.
Councilman Padilla?
Thank you, Mayor. Following along with Councilwoman Ortiz and Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala, I'd like to congratulate two of my grandsons in the next two days, they will be moving on to the next level in their education, going from elementary to junior high and junior high into high school. So, I congratulate them for their efforts, and I do encourage everyone to be as thoughtful as you can with these young kids and give them every recognition for the work that they've put in. And I want to thank this body for tonight's discussion. I think there were very thoughtful comments made. I think that there was a lot of thought being given to the proposals that were, and amendments that were given. I think it shows that we're still working together as part of the team to keep this city in good position to continue to the growth that we were experiencing before the pandemic hit us. So, I encourage everyone to be safe, enjoy the day, and enjoy your families. Thank you.
Thank you for those kind words. I will, before we wrap up, there's no executive sessions this evening, I do want to say that, just, just remember to everybody, your county is working so hard with your city to make sure that we have a recovery that supports our economic recovery alongside the governors, and this makes each and every one of us a participant. It makes each and every one of us responsible. There's a lot of talk about our liberties, but our liberties also include a responsibility in order for us to be each other's keeper, which means that if we're out there, doesn't do any bad. It's not about fear to wear a mask, it's about caring about your neighbor. So, please consider that when you're out there, please consider that when you're supporting people, and thank you for everything that you have done. And to all of those who have families who have lost individuals, thank you. Thank you so much for sharing those individuals with us, and we will remember them on our Memorial Day. That being said, this meeting is adjourned.